Good evening. It is Tuesday, September fourteenth, 2021, at 5:46 PM. My name is Joe Baker and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor and privilege to welcome everyone here tonight and call this Kennedy City Council Public Hearing to Order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One Councilmember Cindy Seines?
Here.
District Two Councilmember John Rodriguez?
Here.
District Three Councilmember Chris Parker cannot be with us this evening. He was called out on duty to help restore power into areas along the coast where they really need the help right now. So he will not be able to join us this evening. District Four Councilmember James Douglas?
Here.
District Five Councilmember Sandra Schultz? Don't see Sandra, so we have three members of the City Council present, and there is a quorum present this evening. Item number one on the agenda is to open the public hearing regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 at the lower tax rate of $0.30.1226 per $100 of taxable value. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation? Or?
Mayor, councilmembers. So what we are proposing here tonight is to choose the known revenue tax rate for the City of Kennedy. While this rate is an increased rate amount over last year's number, it only generates the same amount of revenue for the city as last year's number. The difference between the two is based upon valuations. Our valuations dropped this year, so that's why it went up a couple of cents to the 30 cents. So that's where we're at, what we're proposing.
Any discussion on item number one among the council members? Or questions for Mr. Lynn? If not, we'll proceed to item number two. Consideration and discussion of resident comments regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed 2021-2022 at the lower tax rate of $0.30.1226 per $100 of taxable value. Mr. Lynn, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No, sir, I don't have any comments.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak? If not, then we'll proceed to item number three. We will close the public hearing regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed 2021-2022 at the lower tax rate of $0.30.1226 per $100 of taxable value. Next item on the agenda is number four. To open the public hearing regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed 2021-2022 fiscal year budget, beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor.
City Councilmember Mayor, the budget that we're proposing tonight is the exact same budget that was presented to you in the workshop. So tonight, we're going to take a little comments if anyone has any regarding that. That is essentially where we are with this budget. It is as written as you saw in the workshop.
Any questions from the council or comments on item number four?
I want to bring up the subject of salaries, of pay increases. I feel that I'm okay with the, I think we need to amend the salaries. I mean, with the pay increases. It's what I want to do. I think I'm okay with the 3% cost of living for everybody, for all the employees across the board. But I want to, I think, I don't think we need to do a merit increase this year.
Okay, so what you're proposing is 3% total increase without the merit increase?
Without the merit increase.
And I'm going to have to agree with that.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, if I may? Okay. So when we're doing salaries and we're talking salaries on a budget, the first thing you have to consider with that is, does the budget balance? And the answer to that question, if it's yes, the next thing you have to ask yourself is, how does the budget balance? Does it balance through revenues? Or does it balance through transfers from reserves? If the budget balances from transfers from reserves, then Councilman Rodriguez's concern is 100% justified. If the budget balances through revenues, then his concern is not so justified. And considering salaries are an HR function, and contractually HR is mine, I would have to say the salaries need to stay as written. Because to do anything else could be considered a breach of my contract. Council is not administrative. They're legislative, as we have talked before. HR is a, an administration function.
Ms. Gad, did you have anything to say on the topic? Is that correct, that we'd be in breach of contract if we changed?
Ms. Gad's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just like we were talking about earlier. Ms. Gad's not here yet. Can we set this aside so Ms. Gad gets here, or?
Well, actually, at this point, this is just a hearing. So concern's being voiced, not a big issue to move on. The adoption of the budget will not happen until the actual council meeting, whenever Ms. Gad is presumed to be here.
Okay. Anything else from the council on this item? Correct me if I'm wrong, are we on item number five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number five. Consideration and discussion of resident comments regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed 2021-2022 fiscal year budget, beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. Are there any citizen comments signed up, Mr. Lynn?
No, sir, Mayor, I don't have any comments for that.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment on the proposed budget? If not, then we'll move on to item number six. And we will close the public hearing regarding the City of Kennedy's proposed 2021-2022 fiscal year budget, beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. And if there's nothing further on this agenda, then we'll move to number seven. And I will declare this public hearing adjourned, and the time is 5:53. Good evening. It is Tuesday, September fourteenth, 2021, at 6:00 PM. My name is Joe Baker and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor and privilege to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular Kennedy City Council Meeting to Order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One Councilmember Cindy Seines?
Here.
District Two Councilmember John Rodriguez?
Here.
District Three Councilmember Chris Parker is unable to be with us this evening. He's helping to restore power to affected areas along the Texas coastline. District Four Councilmember James Douglas?
Here.
District Five Councilmember Sandra Schultz?
Here.
Four members of the City Council are present, and there is a quorum present this evening. I would like to welcome Pastor Danielle Knapp with United Methodist Church, who will lead us in prayer. If all will please rise for the prayer, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please fire the church on.
Is the red light on? Is the red light on?
It went off again.
We need batteries.
We need batteries.
We need batteries.
You don't want to use my creature voice?
No, creature voice.
Let's pray. Lord, we are grateful for these men and women who have come on this Tuesday evening to participate in the governance of this community. We pray, Lord, for the decisions that would be made, that they would be ones that benefit all people. We pray, Lord, especially for those who've been affected by the hurricane, for those who have been impacted by COVID, whether they have lost loved ones, whether they have become sick, whether their jobs have been harmed by that disease. We pray, Lord, that you would be at work to bring healing and restoration. And, Lord, we pray that you would grant wisdom and patience and understanding to all that are here tonight.
Yes, sir.
In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Pastor Knapp. We really appreciate you leading us in prayer this evening.
Anytime, thanks for having me.
That brings us to number five on the agenda, citizen comments. Mr. Lynn, do we have any citizen comments signed up?
I do not have any, Ms. Bevan.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a citizen comment at this time? If not, we will move on to item number six. And on item number six, we have a proclamation. Thank a Police Officer Day, September eighteenth, 2021. And I would like to read the proclamation first, and then present it to Chief Ash and any other officers that might be with us this evening. Proclamation. Thank a Police Officer Day, September eighteenth, 2021. Whereas the police officers of the City of Kennedy have worked devotedly and unselfishly on behalf of the people of this community, regardless of peril or hazards to themselves, these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of all the City of Kennedy. And by their service and their dedicated efforts, these men and women have earned the gratitude of the City of Kennedy. And whereas, it is important that all citizens recognize the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of local law enforcement agencies. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers, and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people. Whereas, the City of Kennedy Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to the community. Whereas, Saturday, September eighteenth, 2021, is observed nationally as Thank a Police Officer Day in honor of those law enforcement officers. Now therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of the City of Kennedy, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September eighteenth, 2021, as Thank a Police Officer Day in the City of Kennedy, Texas, and hereby publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community. We certainly do appreciate all the hard work that you and the rest of the members of the Kennedy Police Department do for keeping us safe. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, departmental reports. The first departmental report on the list is the Public Works Report. Good evening, sir. It seems like the mic's not working. You might have to speak a little loudly.
Well, we just put some new batteries in.
Oh, did you? Oh, good.
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Probably hear me anyway without it, so. Good afternoon, council, mayor. We had a pretty, pretty good month last month, on some stuff. Ucency was about normal. Leaks were way down. I'll start off on page two. We sent out 43,239,000 gallons from the plant out to the distribution system. And those numbers running pretty consistent. And then over on page three, up at the top, got water produced from the wells. Again, that's, this number is different from the other because this number goes from meter reading to meter reading, and when the other one goes from the first month to the last of the month. So that's why these numbers look different, if you see them. So we got 39.7 million gallons sent out to distribution. According to our billing, our meter reading and so forth, we accounted for 38,120 gallons of water through the billing. And that give us 1.6 million that is unaccounted for at that point. And then as we go down, we have the fire department use, sewer department use, on field consumption, and so forth. And we had 11 leaks for the month. So that number's down. I believe last month we had 19. So that number's down and quite a bit. And our water loss to do the leaks was 314,000 gallons. And give us an overall water loss at 1.93%. So we found a lot of stuff during the month. And with the less leaks, it really gave us a good percentage for the month on unaccounted water. If you want to look at page four, we've got our stage water restriction report that I've been giving y'all every month, where I keep track of the amount of water that we're using at the time. And you can see all of our numbers are way below even stage one. I still recommend to stay in stage two because that gives us a little breathing room in case if anything happens on that. So we're still looking good there. And then page five is our, our field operations report is where we keep track of. I apologize for it being so small, but I like to get it on the front page. But it's where we keep track of how many work orders and service calls that we do during the month. It's hard to keep track of everything, but we do it the best we can. And also, you can tell by last month, we went from 752 this month to 480. A lot of that had to do with, a lot of us, we were shorthanded a lot, a lot less leaks and so forth. So those numbers are down some. And then on page six, we got, we have our wastewater treatment plant daily samples sheet for the wastewater plant. And you can see that we sent out in the F-flunt 34.9 million gallons that we have treated through the wastewater plant. And that number is way down from last month, too, because we didn't have the 12 or 15 inches of rain that we did a month before. So. And I got a report today that'll still send there. Our solids count has been really high. And over the past few months, we did some modifications and change it. And today, on the samples that come in, we were below 5,200. So that's really good because they were climbing in the sevens and the eights and the nines. And so we've been working, we've been getting those down. A lot of that, I think, had to do with the rain, too, bringing in all kinds of stuff from the infiltration. So that was really good to know that we're back down in the 5,000s. And we had no SSOs for last month. So that's on page seven. I went ahead and threw it in so I could actually make that part of the report. And then page eight is where I put the well pumpage. Again, that's two distribution and the sewer F-flunt together on the same page. So you can kind of see the numbers and how they vary. And you can tell when we have rain, the sewer F-flunt numbers oversee the treated water that we treat. Again, I do this for me so I can kind of keep eye on, on the things that's going on at both plants. Let's see. I had a pre-con meeting. I'm going back to page one now. I'm just going to take out some stuff here. But if y'all have anything, as you see on this front page, or anything else that you might want to ask about, feel free. With the bridge on Helena Road, the 792 bridge, we're calling it. We have a water line there in that ditch and creek. And we'll be moving it over about 30 feet or so. We had a pre-construction meeting with them last week, well, this, yes, last week. And so we're getting ready to move that line over. They're going to let us open cut that and put some caisson in there and move that water line over to get it out of the way of that bridge. I don't have a lot of details about the construction of the bridge, but they did say that they were not going to close the road down. So as we go along and we get more information on that, I'll pass that on to Joe, and he can probably find out more information on that than I can. But we're moving that line over. So the City of Kennedy will be getting a new bridge there. And they want us in and out there by the end of September, but it's going to be kind of pushing it, but it'd be close. So they'll be working on that over the next several months when they get started on that bridge.
Mr. Higgins, they won't allow us to hang the six-inch main on that bridge?
Well, the problem is, is I was told no, but then they've got to tear most of the bridge apart and redo it. And they need the water line moved before they start construction. So that's another reason why we can't. Because I thought of that, too. I was like, man, if we could just do that, but.
And we could do it after they redo the bridge?
Right, because they're widening and replacing most of it, so they're not going to allow us to hang it. Because right now, if you walk up there and look on the bridge, I'm sure you know, it's right there. I mean, when you look straight down, it's right there. And so with them widening and then also adding the riprap at a 30% slope going away from there, it's, you know, it's going to push it out. And that line's already in bad shape anyway. I mean, you can see some clamps on it down in the creek now. So it does need to be moved over, but no, they won't let us at this time, do they?
While we're on the topic, the relocation of the water line, is it going to be like a U-shaped bypass? Where it cuts over and then cuts back?
Well, yes and no. I mean, right there about where that building is on the right, we'll cut in, and there we'll 45 and over, and then 45 and back. And then we'll get over on the other side of... What street, what street is that where the, goes up to the dog pound?
Louise.
Yes. We're going to go just the other side of that street there because they're going to come all the way out to there, and they're going to be replacing those culverts on that stuff. Well, it's that First Street passing the bridge. Is that one of the animals that they'll?
That's Lee Street.
Yeah, to Lee Street. So they'll, we will be replacing all the way just to the other side of Lee Street because they're going to be, there's some culverts in there, and the water line is in the way, and the gas line is there, too.
And this will be new line going in?
Yes. And it's, it'll be six-inch C900 pipe. And most of that through there now is cast iron, except for that patch there in the creek. So that is a long-term goal project also, is to replace all of that all the way to 719, get that cast iron out. The manhole project that we started last, last couple of weeks ago in the Robin Hood and Nyonham area, they replaced four of those manholes. They sent a special order, two of them. And so as soon as they come in, hopefully, they'll have those in this week and be able to get those completed. And that'll give us six of those that'll be changed out if they put it there. That should get quite a bit over there, or give some relief to those people. Just on a side note, it's not under here, under the TCEQ stuff, ever since I've been here, we've been doing a lot of lead and copper samples. Some of you may be on the lead and copper sampling site plan. We've also been having to do a lot of WQP samples, which is water quality perimeter samples. They started making us do those when the new absorber was installed and we changed the process treatment and RO. That was just before I got here. So when those have been being done quarterly, and the lead and coppers, they got behind at one point. So they were having to do them every six months. And instead of doing 20, they were having to do 40 every six months. And it is just a big ordeal to have to do lead and copper samples. It's just tough to get those out and get them back in in a timely manner and get those done. So we did them in December of 2019, plus later. We did them, turned it around, did them in the first of 2020, the end of 2020. And then we done them the first six months of 2021. So I went back on the, our website there where our information is, and I was trying to pull up and make sure our sampling, you know, from July to December. And I noticed that it was all gone. The information was gone. So I sent TCEQ an email. And two days later, they sent me back emails, said that due to our treatment process and the activity that we've done, we are completely caught up with all of our sampling. We don't have to do any more WQP's. And we don't, we did not have to do any more lead and copper till June of 2024, and it's back down to 20. So that was a little feather in our hat for the, for the public works. So I was glad to see that. Any questions, anything else that y'all would like to know or not know?
Any questions from the council? I think we're good. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Next item, excuse me. Under Agenda Item Number Seven is the Police Chief Report. Chief Ash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if that's on.
It's on. It's kind of quiet. It's on.
I don't have anything near exciting as the water line. So for our August report, I'll start off with animal control. We didn't have one of our guys out for about a week, but he is back now and everything is fine. If you'll notice on the numbers, I was asked about this last time, but our citations have increased pretty dramatically. They were running up to three, four tickets a month. In fact, this month, we're up to 10 tickets, plus seven warnings. So they are increasing their citations that they're issuing. We picked up 39, we had 39 calls, including 18 dogs and 24 cats were picked up. We also picked up four snakes, a possum, and an armadillo. So we did all of those. Like I said, our citations are up to 10, and then we had seven warnings. The rescue group did take five dogs this month. We still have the issue of them, that they're, they're packed to the walls, and they're doing everything they can, but it's becoming more difficult with them. They're doing the best they can. For the police department, we had our new officer that we brought on a couple of months ago. He's now finished in field training. He's doing well. He's out on night shift. And so that's good. We got him working there. I still have one officer out on long-term notice. Good news is, it looks like he's coming home out of the hospital. Still probably a long slog to get back to full, but at least he's out of the hospital, offline support, when that comes up. So we're really happy about that. I'm not sure when he'll be able to come back, but we hope so. I also have one supervisor out on an injury. Hopefully, we'll know something on him in a couple of weeks as to whether or not he'll be able to come back, or when he'll be able to come back. We had over 100 hours of training last month, about 104 hours, which included, I sent two officers to instructor training for the ASBETON, ASBETON officer carry, for a little while. This will allow us to have our own instructor in-house. So I don't have to send officers off to recertify. We can do that in-house. They also certified handicap techniques, so that's all things we can do in-house ourselves. We'll also probably, hopefully, open up other agencies as well to come in and train out, if we have an expert for that. We did receive word, I know that St. Andrew talked to y'all last month, last on vacation. I appreciate covering that while I wasn't here. But that we were looking to try to get a canine. I did receive word this month, it looks like that father is going to go through. There's a foundation that's been providing the dog for us, provided the dog and all the training. So we just have to provide the vehicle and take care of it from there. But hopefully, November's the timeframe. So I should know more here, and, you know, this month for sure. That's the timeline again. It's called the Robbie Gale Police K9 Support Foundation. That's who is operating this. Our SRO is back in school now. During the summer, she was helping patrol at the park. That guy's started to back her full-time to school again. If you notice, I don't know if you look at the numbers as well as much as I was kind of talking about, but our burglaries have gone up a little bit, but they're back down again. We had a little blip there for a month or so. But also, our building checks have been up dramatically. We haven't really been able to check the buildings. When you're checking all the buildings at night, it really decreases the possibility to deal with the burglaries. So they've done a really good job on that. Also, you see our SOT, also. that, also you see our assaults, also comply, uh, assaults, there's not much the police can do about preventing assaults, but it is good to see that they're down again also. Uh, on February, or October fifth, just a reminder, we have our national night out, we're arguing, we're still planning to go ahead and do that, it'll be an outdoor event, uh, so we'll try to be outside and try to keep our social distance, that kind of thing. It'll be from six to eight P M. there at Gully Park, uh, the city park, uh, we're gonna have some hot dogs for everybody, some water, some popcorn, uh, inflatable, let's play some music going, a lot of other public safety agencies are gonna come as well, they'll be handing out information to the public on their services, uh, we'll have uh, ID kits available for the kids, uh, if you see these, you're not gonna have them there, you can fill it out, fingerprints, pictures, all that with your children, you can keep those on file in case something ever happens to your child, uh, we'll have all those uh, available as well, should be from six to eight that evening, uh, we hope to have a good turnout, uh, we did this two years ago before that national bird COVID, uh, and we had a really good turnout, everybody seemed really good, so I'm hoping to have, that is why we'd like to invite everybody to come out, also our citizens as well, it's a really good opportunity for citizens to get to know their police and interact in a uh, what I call a non-confrontational way, but I mean stopper, traffic stop, or if they have something bad happen to them, they can just give the mail to the police, uh, there'll also be a lot of other information available towards that, so, uh, I hope to see everybody for that, and I think that is my report, I should have any more.
Could you repeat the date on that, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat the date on the uh, night out?
October fifth, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday, Tuesday, October fifth.
Yes, um, everywhere else in the country does national night out on, on the first Tuesday in August, uh, Texas changed that to October because August is, you know, you know, August.
Better weather.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's insane, but uh, Arizona still does it in August, so I don't know how, but uh, yeah, we have the first Tuesday in October.
Sounds great, looking forward to it, any other questions for the chief? No, thank you for your report, chief.
Thank you.
The next item under seven departmental reports is building department and code compliance reports, Mr. Lynn, we have a presentation?
Counselor Mayor, I'm Mr. Alvaro Arizot this evening, um, his uh, report doesn't have a cover sheet like it normally does, uh, so you can just pretty much read that and see where, is that fitting for it, uh, one thing I would like to add, things that I know about Mr. Alvaro has been up to, Councilor Science had asked a particular question when we were talking about redirecting and how we were gonna start doing things and handling substandard properties in the city of Kennedy, uh, at a particular time, uh, we did not have any that were what we would call qualifying for that, Mr. Alvaro has been working very diligently, and we have several properties that are gonna be qualifying to potentially move forward with that particular course of action, one of them is a particular property that has been given the city of Kennedy fits for eons, uh, I'm not gonna make any mentions until that happens, but you all will know what that is, any more specifics, come see me after the meeting, I'll tell you who it is, um, but uh, we are gonna be moving forward that way, we'll be enlisting the SCAD's expertise in that to make sure that we follow all the proper procedures and doing that sort of things in, in line, uh, to make sure we get that taken care of, uh, once again, all I can say about it is this, once we do this, uh, and we turn it around, put them out for bid, uh, it will be conditioned upon the person who gets the bid, the city council board's demo, the structure, whatever that might be, and then they will have twelve months to uh, develop the property, we're not gonna let them leave vacant land, and I know Mayor Baker had a concern about that, but like I told Mayor Baker, what we do is we take them on a case-by-case basis, you know, the next door neighbor comes in with the highest bid, and they just wanted to do their property, we certainly will be cognizant and empathetic to that and before, but for the most part, the expectation and the bar is being set that it has to be redeveloped if that's the law, so, any questions about anything that I might acknowledge of on this?
Next item number seven, under number seven is streets and parks report.
Good evening, Arielle, uh, we'll start off with the parks, uh, for the month of August, uh, on the parks, the complex was kinda slow, didn't have much going on, all we had was two, uh, two field rills for the month, uh, the crews still go out and they still drag the field at least uh, once a week, or each field once a week, just in order to keep the uh, the pellets rejuvenated and everything else to, so they, they, they drug the fields five days, uh, then we trimmed and uh, mowed around the, the complex on twelve different days, uh, the uh, elevator has been completed, that the install for the complex for, from the concession stand up to the press box, uh, right now, we're in the process of receiving quotes for the netting, it's gonna go over the top of the entire complex, uh, I was working with a couple of different engineers and trying to find out the structural integrity of the building to see if we could just go with one anchor solely up at the top in the center of the, the building and branch out in all directions to cover all the seeded areas, uh, up to the dugouts, uh, in order to protect the uh, the spectators and stuff from foul balls, uh, during the softball season, we ended up uh, with the glass on the softball side of the, the press box broken twice, uh, it's just one of the things, we didn't have the netting, there was no netting in place, uh, the windows that they put up went to double pane and shut it instead of uh, shatterproof, uh, but uh, so now we're in the process of working on that, because we did have uh, a young lady that was hit uh, on the forehead from a foul ball from a, a different side of the field, uh, when we have multiple games going, you have softball, we had three softball games going at one time and a baseball game, so you've got all four fields going, and you've got foul balls coming from each direction, it's kinda hard, all the people yell is heads up, so everybody tries to duck as best as possible, uh, it turns out this young lady was actually right in front of the concession stand, and the ball came through the uh, right next to the window and clipped her and reported it, so uh, Mr. Lynn and I had gotten together to see what we could do about getting the netting, uh, I've seen it at different complexes and other venues and stuff, and uh, it works out to where it funnels the ball to the four different locations and down through a spout, so usually it, it's very successful and, and it's also for the safety of everybody around, not only the players, but uh, you know, your spectators and, and the kids that are out there in general, so uh, been working with them on that, because uh, trying to find out whether we can anchor solely from the center of the press box or on top of the concession stand would be a lot easier than having the contractor come in and try to put anchors all the way across on the uh, on the top of the building itself, uh, we have to pull in different directions and, and it makes it a lot uh, a lot more tedious as far as how much drilling is gonna go in and everything else, and for future, the replacement of the uh, the anchors that are gonna be put in there, so it's just been a process trying to get that completed. Uh, as far as the kid park and the pavilion, the, they we trimmed and mowed for eighteen days, picked up trash on twenty-four days, and uh, hauled off branches and, and debris for two days, cleaned up the pavilion on nineteen days, uh, the pavilion gets rented on the weekends, so there's times that they go out there on a Saturday or Sunday morning, pick up all the trash out of the receptacles and stuff like that, uh, they also worked on tightening down a bunch of the uh, the playground equipment for the, for the smaller kids, uh, we ended up getting a couple of wrenches that were able to fit some of the, the set screws and stuff like that that are in there for the, for the moving parts, so they were working on, on tightening up some of the playground equipment, uh, on the walking trail, bridge, basketball court, the Zeebo, uh, they mowed and we trimmed for eighteen days, also picked up uh, trash all along the, the grounds for twenty days, uh, also did some trimming of some low lying branches, and there was a couple of uh, branches that were kinda, they were pretty much dead, so they trimmed those up, uh, and hauled them off, they completed the, the work on the volleyball court, uh, so we had the, the heavy sand on the bottom, and then we had the, the light fluff sand on top, uh, to make it a lot easier on the, the knees, the feet, the elbows when they threw dives playing uh, volleyball, uh, they also added base material around the, the entire area of the walking park that was in need after the erosion from all the, the recent rains that we had gotten in the previous month, so they worked on doing that, uh, on the Nottingham and the soccer fields, they mowed and we trimmed for six days and picked up trash for twelve days. Any questions on parks? Okay, moving on to streets, uh, the street crew worked on hand patching and grading for a total of fifteen days using sixty-one point one cubic yards of tight D-plus asphalt and forty-one point seven cubic yards of the Patch Pro, uh, the streets also patched a hundred and forty-one potholes during a seven-day stretch using a total of thirty-seven cubic yards of tight D asphalt and three point four cubic yards of the Pro Patch or Patch Pro, uh, the total amount of tight D-plus asphalt that was used was ninety-eight cubic yards for the month and forty-five cubic yards of the Patch Pro, uh, crews worked on the drainage for six days using seventeen point three cubic yards of base and also used Portland cement uh, in, within the, the base to help stabilize some of the erosion areas, uh, the crew swept for a total of eleven days, mowed and we trimmed forty-seven roadways for the month, uh, worked on three, repaired three signs, set out three temporary signs, used a total of three bags of ready-made concrete, and then uh, miscellaneous, the guys went out and uh, hauled off twelve trailer loads of brush from diff- different areas throughout town to the collection station, uh, picked up the trash out of the receptacles uh, around downtown and City Hall for ten days, they replaced ten trash carts, delivered two additional trash carts, five new trash carts and picked up or removed eight trash carts, uh, we had a gentleman spray uh, four days uh, throughout the town for the mosquitoes, also used eleven mosquito dunks for the month, uh, we also started uh, a little bit more strenuous PM program to where we're doing a lot more of our servicing of the equipment and stuff in-house to, to try to save a little bit on the uh, on uh, taking it out to the vendors and stuff like that, uh, what we can't take care of or, or lacking in some of the knowledge on some of the heavier fleet pieces of equipment, we will take out, but for the majority of the, the small pieces of equipment such as zero-turn gators, uh, even the backhoe and, and uh, the skid steer, uh, we do that in-house now, we just have them bring, we purchase the filters, take care of it, so we had two PM days this month to where we went in there and changed the oil on various pieces of equipment, uh, and the uh, dump trucks and stuff will still be taken out, but uh, that's kinda what we hit as far as the PM program, uh, we're tracking a lot of the hours and mileage a lot tighter in order to keep uh, keep uh, the equipment and vehicles maintained, uh, as far as projects, uh, we started on the culvert and ditch maintenance programs that we had talked about last month, uh, most of D-wick was taken care of on the area that needed to be taken care of, uh, today we were working out there on chaining, knocking out some of the drainage on chaining, so uh, hopefully within the next uh, two to three weeks, weather permitting, we'll have the, the majority of the areas that were hit and more affected by the, the relapse, heavy rainfall that we had, uh, taken care of and, and kinda tightened up in some areas. Uh, I kinda made a mistake on my scheduling for the weeks when we went out today, uh, I wasn't thinking about tomorrow, and I had a schedule, uh, just to let you know, our street sweeper came in, uh, so we have uh, Timco coming tomorrow to give a demonstration to add the brushes on the side brooms, the gutter brooms, uh, because that, when they hauled it up, they couldn't uh, they couldn't have them on there for some odd reason or another, so the mechanic's coming in tomorrow to put the brooms, the side brooms on there, uh, he's gonna go through the whole safety spiel with the, the videos, uh, how to maintain it, what to look for as far as the maintenance is concerned, and all that other good stuff, so the street sweeper is in and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, uh, you might see it out and about trying to take care of certain areas that, uh, the guys have been uh, hitting up on corners and certain streets, trying to kill, clip some of the grass and, and silt off of, uh, it's been an issue for quite some time, and it seems like uh, it's a never-ending thing when, with the silt and the grass, uh, just due to not having an operational street sweeper in the past, so you couldn't get everything out of the gutter, so as soon as, you know, we clean more silt with Washington, so hopefully this will help us maintain and look, uh, help the streets look a lot better in the future. Also, uh, we should be doing some level up, like we spoke uh, last month on noises between gram and booth, uh, prior to the chip seal, still waiting on some of the, two of the contractors to get back with me on the chip seal uh, bits, or what they have for the quotes for square yardage, uh, same thing with the, the striping, uh, the striping for Business Park Boulevard has been one of the things that y'all had discussed and is being tried to take care of, the hard part is, is the strippers that we have nearby are actually hitting us pretty hard as far as the price per linear foot due to the fact that we don't have large jobs to where we've got tons of lane miles, uh, so it's gonna be one of the things to where you're gonna see the price per linear foot is gonna be a little bit higher than what they normally charge, that's why I was hoping to get with the, the guys from Tech Dot to see whenever they had a contractor in the area, if we could kinda coincide with them while they're doing their striping here with the long lines, see if they can give us a better rate on what it would cost us either to do the thermal, I prefer to do the thermoplastic, uh, but if nothing else, we might have to go with the water base, uh, both of them will have the reflective beads and it, it's just a matter of, the thermoplastic is substantially higher in price than, than the water base. Uh, also for future projects or events, the Under Armour Flag Football League is set to start September twenty-fifth out on the complex, they're looking at having a six-week schedule, uh, three games going on uh, at one time, so hopefully there's a, there's a, there's kids having a good old time on the complex and, and uh, we get some, some really good use and, and uh, you know, foot tracking to be there, so uh, you know, to continue on with the way it was during softball season, word of mouth, we do have the complex, you know, it looks great in facilities, the venue, uh, that way it'll, it'll generate, you know, more traffic that comes through, uh, there was a spreadsheet that was put on there and uh, pretty much self-explanatory as far as days of the, the days of the month and put all, you know, we hit per day, and then you've got the total down at the bottom, the amount of jobs that we do per month.
I have a question about the brush pickup, maybe this is something that needs to be addressed by the city council and Mr. Lynn and the city attorney, there's brush piles, little ones in front of people's houses, now I know I've had some, you call in, the city, and when they get a chance, they'll come by and pick it up and everything, but there's some brush piles that I've seen and I can't pinpoint, but I know you could go over there with a match and it'd go up like it had gasoline on it, is there not something that we could do, and, and, and I'm just bringing this out, anybody's got any ideas, that's great, I just think it looks terrible, drive around and you see all these, you know, people got brush out in their front yard in nice houses and stuff, and I'm like, why can't we do something as a city to initiate them to pick it up, and, and I'm gonna say this, I don't wanna make anybody mad, but I'm gonna speak, you know, either a fine or, and this is a legality thing, I don't know anything about, and Mr. Lynn might know something more about it, because this, this looks bad on Kennedy, and I can't believe that people in Kennedy would drive around and, and like seeing all these brush piles, and I'm not talking about, you know, tree limbs necessarily, I'm talking about little pieces of brush that end up in a pile like this, that's, ever since I've been back in Kennedy, that's something that's always bugged me, and uh, like I say, I, I grew up here, so I, I'm like, why can't we get this fixed, and I don't know the avenue to go in, that's why I mentioned Mr. Lynn and our city attorney and the city council, I'd just like to see something done about that.
I received an email just the other day on the same topic, I think the person said they've been there four months, uh, Mr. Lynn, how, how often is it picked up?
We have a, so Waste Connection comes out once a month, and I will tell you, in my time in Kennedy, I have- And I will tell you, in my time in Kennedy, I have followed them to the point of what people consider stalking several times. And I have actually got out of my vehicle when they were picking up stuff and just questioned why they did what they did, right on the spot. They have a five cubic yard max. But the problem with their maximum is they're not thinking logically. It's a five cubic yard max per resident, but we have 1,600 water accounts. So if you take five cubic yards times 1,600, that, that multiplies that really quick, okay? But yet, their interpretation is, well, the day we're in Kennedy, five cubic yard max. So what we're going to do going forward is we're going to let them come in and continue to pick up their five cubic yards, and then I'm going to get with Mr. Hernandez, and we're going to institute our own brush pickup in the city of Kennedy so that we can take care of this. Because if Waste Connections is going to be that way, that's fine. They have worked with us recently in a lot of things. I think everyone has seen that with the extra trash pickups and so on and so forth. And just whenever it gets time to renew the contract, we may attempt to renegotiate the amount that they're picking up and clarify what their five cubic yards truly means or whatever it is at that point in time. But Mr. Hernandez and I will get together, and we'll orchestrate something. We try, we're going to set it aside, kind of districts is probably the best way to do it, one through five, and we'll do something to help alleviate this problem.
I think that'd be great, however you can resolve it.
So there's a way to utilize city staff and equipment to expedite the removal?
Yes, sir.
In the short term?
In the short term, yes, sir. There is. And we'll, we'll sit down and we'll figure out what, what doesn't encumber his people too much for where we can do it. The key is, you know, we, we've talked ideas of one district a, a week, okay? But then you've got to set aside one day every week to do it, and sometimes other things come up that needs to get done, and then that week gets missed, and then so on and so forth. So consistency is the key here. If we can do it once a month, then that's what we're going to do. We're going to start with once a month in addition to the Waste Connections. So, but we'll work something out.
That'd be great.
One of the other things that, that affects Waste Connections and the gentleman that picks it up is where they're placing the brush. That, that's been an issue in the past, and it continues to be an issue because some people don't realize when they put it out of the way where it's convenient for them, it's inconvenient for the person running the grapple. And that goes for my guys as well. Anytime that we go over there, we're having to walk the site, which we're going to do regardless. But a lot of the times what we're running into is the, the homeowners putting it either right next to the, to the gas meter, right next to a hydrant, right next to the pole in between the guide wire coming down. So the, the gentleman that's running the, the grapple on the, the truck for brush, he's stuck between a rock and a hard place. And I've seen him get down and look, and there's times that I've talked to him about certain piles because they've been sitting there for quite a while. I hadn't gone out and actually done the walk-around as he did, and he'll show me that there is a gas meter there. It's on top of one of our, our water meters or on top of the housing of the water meter, the box and stuff like that. So when he's going in there, he's touching ground with the, the end of the grapple. And when you yank up, you're pulling up, and then, you know, you pull up the gas line, you pull up a, a meter box, stuff like that, then we're in trouble. You know, so the, the one thing that I have talked to some of the residents that have approached me on some of the, the discussions on brush is when you put it, put it out there where it's in the open, out of the way, away from, you know, the obstacles that, that he's having to, to go around, but then we run into the trees. Some of the people are putting them right up underneath the tree branches that are hanging over so he can't get the, the machine. Because you've got to realize, he's on a, he's pretty much on an 18-wheeler on the top of it, sitting there trying to swing around a boom with the grapple. So that becomes an issue as well. So that's, that's one of the things that we've come across a lot, more often than not, is where they're, they're placing the brush. And then it just takes us longer when we have to go over there and pick it up because we're having to do it by hand just because of the gas line, because of the guide wires and stuff like that. What we have is a, is a grapple on our skid steer. Easier maneuver, we put it on one of the traders. The last time we had gone around picking up brush, we had both, both dump trucks and two traders hauling brush. And we had knocked out quite a bit, but then it's just like anything else. The other part is, is, is Waste Connections, the guy is not going to pick up mattresses, not going to pick up box bearings, trash. People start incorporating the trash with the brush. They pile it all together, all he sees, or all he has to see is something other than brush, and he's just going to drive by it. Thirdly is the people putting it in vacant lots. Normally, they, they run the brush list according to the water bills. If the person is not consuming water or, or any utilities there, it doesn't have a valid address, so he's going to go by. If it's just a vacant lot and there's no services there, they're not going to pick it up. And I have actually approached one person twice about dumping in vacant lots. He's getting paid to trim trees, remove it and everything else, and he finds vacant lots to dump them on. So that's a difference.
It's not a black and white issue, so, so it has to be worked out. You know, y'all have a hard time with it, I understand. Some of the people that pick up the brush, it's...
Joe, have you looked into modifying one of our backhoes? Like, you putting a thumb on it?
Put the thumb on it.
And then a bucket that opens and closes, you know, for grabbing? We should look into that, and that's going to help us be able to handle that. I know the skid steer, but sometimes you need the backhoe, it's got that reach. And with that thumb on it, you can grab brush and take it up and put it up on a dump truck. That'd be something to look at.
I think I have one other suggestion. Back to the sweeper. It is not something that I see often because I don't walk this street of downtown Kennedy very often, but we were in front of the Kennedy Family Practice, which is the Dr. Doogie and Dr. Reese and Mary Donnies Clinic. There must be four inches of silt at that curb with the nasty cigarette butts, diapers, water bottles, really a mess. It was not pretty. And that place is busy all day, and that was just so unsightly, it was embarrassing and dirty. And hopefully, that sweeper can...
We'll have to go in there and loosen it up.
Really tend to. I mean, there's so much dirt, it's like this far from the top of the curb there in front of that building, and it just is very unsightly. Maybe we can work on it and clean it real quick to that page.
It'll, 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 it's just one of the things that if it's been sitting long and kind of hardened over...
It's very loose, like sand.
Oh, it's loose, so it's, that's even better. It'll take a couple of passes when it's back there.
Thank you.
Going back to the brush pickup, obviously, we've talked about opportunities to educate the public in regards to animal control and different topics. I think that would be a good opportunity for, through our website and our social media accounts to, in the news business, we called it an explainer, where we would do a little story that explains how something works, and it's good things for the public to know there are, if you're going to put up a large amount of brush, you know, here's how you do it, step by step, so that might be something to look at down the road.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Hernandez? Thank you for your report. Oh, I'm sorry, I had to have two other things, going back to parks real quickly. There's a large pile of construction debris behind the sports complex. Where are we at on the removal of that?
That's going to be one of them to where we'll remove it, but right now, where we were removing it too is pretty much completely full. That was behind the collection station. That's where we had the pile of spoils before, but all the pile, or all the spoils from the East Main project are back there right now, and...
So we just don't have anywhere for it to go at this point? Okay. Hopefully, down the road, we'll be able to get it out there. The other question was, I know at some point the intention was to connect the walking trails between the Escanego Creek Parkway and Joe Belli Park. Where are we at on that?
It's in the works. Mr. Lynn and I have spoken about connecting them. I am up to seven employees, up from five for the last month and a half, so just trying to keep up with our everyday operations is, is a struggle. We're up to seven, hopefully, pretty soon going to be fully staffed to 10, and then we can branch off and do a lot more around town other than having to be together, because when I have one crew and we're kind of stuck together, it makes it a little bit hard to complete everything that we're trying to do throughout the town. But that is something that we have talked about, pouring concrete ribbons and putting the decomposed granite and everything else and connecting it. Also putting in some of the RCP that was pulled out from the East Main project and put in that one area to where we can keep the water flowing the way it needs to be and kind of bridge over the top of, of that area. But it is in the works, it's in the plans, it's just a matter of trying to get there.
Got to take, take things one at a time, I understand. All right. Thank you for your report, appreciate it, sir. Continuing under agenda item number seven, city secretary report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see. So I have in my report that we had six new hires for the month of August, but I believe that it was actually five. We did lose one of those new hires right around the first of August, or first of September. We do have openings that were advertising corporate parks, streets, and public works that were, were handling at this point. For utility billing, we had 23 new residential services and zero commercial accounts open. For disconnect services, we have 15 residential disconnect and one commercial disconnect. The fire, the department reports to me that they had five calls, one gas leak, grass fire, motor vehicle accident, oil fire, and a smoking building. They indicated they had used 230 gallons of water and had 23 personnel respond. For the municipal ports, we have 122 defendants that were seen for the month of August and collected $22,477 with a net to the city of $16,596. Something I did want to indicate that isn't on this report is that Amy is working on a fall festival for another movie in the park, intentional hayride, and she is diligently working at Christmas in Kennedy, planning out a three, three-weekend event in the month of December.
Well, let's go ahead and tell them about the whole thing for them.
You guys got any questions?
So Christmas in Kennedy will last three weeks?
Three weeks. It'll be up, starting right around the first of September, and we're looking at some special event every Saturday, the 4th, the 11th, and the 18th. That's what we're planning right now.
Sounds good.
I have a, I have one question. Your report shows zero separations, Mr. Higgins' report shows two resignations. Was that the street department? Was that like a transfer to the street department from the water department?
We lost new hires in the month of September, the very beginning of September. When I run my reports, I go for the separation date, and those actually fail right the very first week of September.
Okay.
And he puts his report together in September.
Gotcha, okay.
So we have a, a crossover on that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you for your report. Agenda item number eight, city manager report. The first item on this agenda is current projects, future projects, current operations and/or future operations. Mr. Lynn?
Mayor, city council, residents of Kennedy. If it would please the mayor and the council, one of the things that I wish to do to my city manager report is going to be just a tad bit more lengthy than normal, so if it's okay, I'd like to flip this around and start with the financials and get that out of the way as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you take a look at your financial reports, I did give you an updated one. I had made a typo on the original one that I had submitted to you, and the typo, the number was correct, I just left the red underperforming down in the expenditure column, and it should have been the green outperforming. So I did change that, and I'll highlight that as well. As we always do, we start on the left-hand side, the available liquidity. 2.989 in the general fund, hotel motel taxes at 1.026. The water and sewer funds at 153, and the pegment funds at 2.449. So our technical account, we have 7.317. And then as the daily report, we have 1.76 million in the bank. That gave us a total available liquidity of $9.05 million, which is about 5.82 months worth of expenditures. Once again, it's just below my six-month threshold. If you remember, Mr. Almond, who's in the audience tonight, he stood up here and said he's got about three months, so we kind of got a happy meeting going here. So we're in a little good financial shape. Revenues for the month, the general fund took in $574,194. That gives us a year-to-date number of $6,349,000. Our PEG number is 91.67% since we're in the 11th month. We're roughly about 57.65%, so kind of underperforming there. The expenditures for the general fund, we spent $494,548, about 96.63%, so we're underperforming on the expenditures, but it's getting closer to the marked number, and a lot of that comes from purchases that we've made, so as we've discussed all along for the past year. Water and sewer account is at $788,003 in revenue. They're at 96.3%, so they're outperforming their budget revenue-wise. And expenditures for them came in at $492,111, which is at 81.58%, so they're outperforming the budget there. The total expenditures is outperforming the budget at 90.79, so we're overall spending less than what we were meant to spend, but revenues are still lagging behind 73.59. Any questions about the numbers real quick? From you, Ron?
Continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so a couple of quick things here. My city manager report's only two-thirds of the page tonight versus three pages. East Main is still going on, they've had some issues with the concrete still. We've made some suggestions that cooling process is probably not happening the way it needs to happen, so Mr. Hernandez and I talked about it, and we come up with the idea that maybe what they need to do is pour smaller sections and stop that earlier in the day to give it more time to cool. We could authorize them to pour overnight, but that'd be a great inconvenience to our residents on East Main, so we're withholding that so that the residents aren't inconvenienced with trucks driving back and forth at nighttime whenever they're trying to sleep. So that has been recommended, we're going to see if they're going to go with that. The Graham Road and Milling, we received one bid for that, which we'll get to later in the agenda. Should the council award that contract, we'll give that particular person 10 days to mobilize, and then from there, we're going to give them 90 days to complete the project. It would be a firm 90 days, that won't be 91 unless we somehow have 20 or 30 days worth of rain or something, but that's just kind of standard, so that's kind of where we want that. Building A is to us a few loose ends to tie up before we get our ADA certification. The elevator's a major problem right now. When the original engineers drew it up, they first off didn't draw it up for an actual elevator, so we've got to go back and figure that out. And they also didn't draw it up for a way to put in a phone line so that you can have the emergency phone in the elevator that you need. So AT&amp;T's been working with Mr. Hernandez. We've got a kind of a little hiccup there that we're trying to work through with AT&amp;T so we can get that phone line run into the building and then into the elevators so we can get that done. We can't really do anything until we get the elevator online, so we've got to get the ADA certification for everything out of the park, so that's where we are on that one. The CDBG sewer line grant, nothing's really happened too much in the last month. Engineers are just getting everything ready, fixing the public draft of bids, and then we'll start to get that rolling, and that's kind of a slow creeping, creeping project there. we'll start to get that rolling, and that's kind of a slow creeping project there. The water line, well number 17 and well number 18, it's the same report for both of them. The slab was poured on 9/8 for both of them, and the downhole well videos were taken, completed, and sometime tomorrow I'll forward the actual videos to you guys in your emails so that you'll have those to look at, and so I'll have those to do that. Okay? I have one more presentation to do tonight, and if it would please the council and the mayor, what I'd like to do with this part of the presentation is instead of facing the council and the mayor, I'd like to face the audience and the camera to do that. I would also encourage you guys, if you want to see what I'm fixing to do, I give you all an opportunity to stand up and come to this side of the other tour and while I'm kind of getting everything ready.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, white page. I'm on the screen right now. Sorry. So, ever since I've been here in City of Kennedy, which has been about a year and a half now, all the council members I've ever interacted with, residents I've interacted with, have all voiced to me a couple of things, and it's all been kind of uniform as to what it is they want to see in the City of Kennedy. One of the things everybody mentioned was the convention center. We needed a convention center, and I thoroughly agree with that 100 percent, we needed a convention center. Another thing everybody mentioned to me was, we'd like to see a youth center. Well, you know what, I kind of agree with that too, we need a youth center as well. So here's what we have done, and when I say "we," I really mean your city council and your mayor, they are a huge part of this as to what we have done, so they get all the accolades for this. So, we had a workshop, it was earlier into the tenure of Mayor Baker, and that workshop was for a convention center. And we brought in the residents, and we sat in here and we talked about a convention center, and brought out three different types of architects' drawings and that, and everybody looked at them, and we talked, and we talked, and we talked. At the end of the workshop, there was one particular set of designs that everybody seemed to gravitate towards, and that was the ones that was done in 2014. And that actually was the original set of architect's drawings that we had here in the city, and if you'll pardon me, I usually use a pointer, so I'm going to whip this up, because it's got these problems, that's pretty cool. So anyway, so in 2014, we had this architect's drawing done, and the building was 16,270 square foot, and had an eight-vehicle parking lot, one meeting room, two small meeting rooms. The cost back in 2014 was estimated to be $4.28 million. I did a cost analysis on that a while back, and it comes in by $4.9 million. The key to this particular one, this one was really kind of controversial in location because the original, we were going to put this site in Nottingham, and then all of a sudden, the city council bought this lot over across Craig Street, and then it went from there. But anyway, point being, things to keep in mind, key things we want to pay attention to here is 2014, $16,270, today's cost of $4.9 million. That's a very important number, $4.9 million. Okay? All right. Let me turn the page. So, 2021, this is what the city council approved, okay? A 12,000-square-foot building with 15.7 acres of land has a completely paved parking lot, it has all fixtures, tables and chairs, it has a fully-equipped kitchen, and all utilities are already run there, and we bought the place for $1 million. And just so that you all know, that was six years. So, we bought six years for $1 million, and so we talked to the architect kind of briefly. He gave me a range of potential renovation costs, from a low of $750,000 to a high of $1.8 million, so we landed on about $1.5 at the high end, we don't want to spend $1.8. So we've got $1.8 million, purchase price is roughly about $1.1 million, so we have a convention center building already, we're set to go for $2.6 million. Okay? But wait, there is more. Trying to get some humor here, so please forgive me. My kids say I'm not humorous, so I get them. So the convention center in 2014 is $4.9 million. We take the cost projected of $2.6 million for this particular building and convention center, we back that up, and I mean, that gives the City of Kennedy a city of $2.3 million. What are we going to do with $2.3 million? I mean, our city council was willing to spend $5 million on one building, right? And certainly, the residents wouldn't have been too upset at that, because they would have a nice building for $5 million, and we would have been fine. But, you know, we have kids in time, and they should get a youth activity center. So 2021, what we've done is, when I was talking to the architect yet again, and I said, hey, you know, shoot me some plans of what you have, on youth centers that you guys have done. So he shoots me this one set of plans, beautiful set of plans, 12,000-square-foot building. This building, as you walk in the front door this way, you walk into an open area. The open area is an area that's just kind of a gathering area, you can put your games there, pool tables, video games over in the back room, multiple pool tables, whatever. Off to the left-hand side over here, there's a little cove area where the kids can go and sit and drink and do whatever they want with that. At the very end of the building down here, there's a weight room, it's pretty cool, it's got a weight room in it, you know, that kind of things, they could go exercise, or do pilates, or whatever it is that they do. And then off to the left, an indoor full-size basketball court. So, 12,000-square-foot building, $2.5 million was the cost on that estimated, so we want to break this down and show the City of Kennedy where we are. We could have spent $4.9 million on one building alone, but instead, we did a convention center for $2.6 million, and a youth activity center for $2.5 million, which means we're at a wonderful grand total of about $5.1 million. The City of Kennedy gets both of its desired buildings, a convention center and a youth center. And these are two projects that we're going to undertake fairly aggressively in 2021. So I just wanted to bring this out and let you all know that all the talk, all the scuffle that you all have been hearing, yes, we did about six years, we're going to renovate that place for you guys, we're going to make it a nice convention center for everybody, and then we're going to come back, we're also going to build you all a youth center. The youth center will go out of Nottingham, off of Nottingham out there at the park, it fits right in real well. We're going to work with the architect on positioning of that, I think maybe we can position it a certain way to where it doesn't impose upon the residents of Nottingham too much, but anyway, so there we are. So any questions? From anybody? Questions? Comments? Yes, I see someone raising their hand back there.
The youth center, how would you get access to it? Would it be open regularly, if you reserve it? Is it...
Youth activity center is going to be for the youth of the community, okay? So there'll be no charge to our youth to use it, much like our sports complex. I don't charge for the use of the sports complex for our youth, our little league, or our school. Okay, those are, that's our stuff, okay? There's no reason for us to charge our people to use with our tax dollars and pay for it. So the use of it is just going to be open door. It's going to be open, you know, we're going to staff it, so it'll be open hours, we'll figure out what those hours are, the council and I will get together, and we'll decide, you know, do we want to leave it open 8 to 5, 10 to 6, 8 to 8, how do we want to do it, maybe a little later on the weekends, what have you. The key thing to remember with all this is, is that with the youth activity center having the basketball court in it, we're not only going to just be able to bring the kids in and do that, and the basketball court has a second benefit that most people my age don't know, well, I don't know, I don't know, but it's a game called pickleball. Now, y'all have played pickleball? Okay, very good, see, I hear about the chirpings going, what are the crickets going out there? Anyway, so pickleball's a big thing in North Texas, so they play these pickleball things, it's almost like badminton, it's with a wiffle ball, and you just hit it back. Anyway, so we can do basketball, and we can have basketball tournaments and things of that nature.
And pickleball.
You play pickleball?
No.
See, I always thought pickleball was going to play with your pickup, because that's beside the... So, okay, so, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Lynn, not only are you getting the two buildings for the price of one, don't forget that 15 acres of property.
That's a very good point, Councilor Schultz. Yes, we're also getting 15.7 acres of land and all of this, which is awesome, because seeing we have a convention center, a couple of things you've got to look at when you have a convention center, okay? What's going to go around the convention center? You don't want vacant land. Now that we've got land, oh man, we can do everything, we can bring in people, we can say, hey, you have a big Outback, we got yourselves a convention center, Outback Steakhouse, you know, we can go out to all sorts of things. Maybe, you know, we've got a ham, and maybe we can go get us a Wyndham Resort or something, you know, bring in a big resort hotel or something like that, I don't know. But we will have land to work with for them, so yeah, essentially, here's what we've done. I can probably hear some people out there right now, oh my gosh, this is going to talk. You know, those who know me know I do this. So here's the deal. What did the City of Kennedy really, really do? All we did was we traded a paper asset, cash, for a more tangible asset, a building. And in case you all are wondering, a friend of mine looked at the building, I asked him, says, give me the appraisal of the building and property, I bought the building for $1 million. I can turn around and sell it for $3 today. So, it was on the market at 1.9, we got it for 1, I can turn around and sell it for $3. So we took an asset, we invested our money, we have immediate ROI on our money. Not that we're going to sell it, guys, it's for City of Kennedy's.
And we still have property on Craig Street, too?
Sir?
We still have property on Craig Street?
We still have the property on Craig Street, and I have a master plan for that. So, anybody else have questions?
Going back to the youth activity center, for those of us who've been around a while, our kids were involved in basketball, which was a wonderful thing for our kids, and a lot of people missed that basketball league we had. Would there be an opportunity for Kennedy residents to organize a basketball league and use the facility at no cost?
Yes, there would, we could actually do something like that. As a matter of fact, Mayor, if you wanted to, you and the five council members could form a league, and you could take on the fire department, the police department, I'll read it. How's that?
That sounds like fun.
Well, we can, yeah, I'll show the referee once, I'll referee, you have to stop a little while. You know, yes, to be more serious, I can answer your question, we could definitely do that. One of the big things about the youth center, and I'm going to, I want to go on record in saying this, and please forgive me what I'm about to say, but this is a deep passion of mine as a city manager. I know I've taken a lot of heat from people about bringing a swimming pool to the City of Kennedy, okay? This is not the time to do that. Now, if our wonderful school would be willing to partner with the city, and be willing to have a swim program, and enter UIL as a swim team, I would seriously consider doing a swimming pool for the City of Kennedy. But as of right now, we have the wonderful splash pad that is down at Escudero Park, that's a beautiful splash pad, and that's sufficient for now. Right now, this right here, this youth activity center being what it is, is the most important thing for the residents of Kennedy.
If we built a pool, would it be adjacent to the youth activity center or adjacent to the convention center?
We could actually do either or at the council's discretion, depending upon how big a pool we want to do. You see, pools come in all different sizes, so if we're going to go with, we're going to go with K.I.S.D. and do it so they can do UIL, we're going to have to do at least a 15-meter pool, at least, okay? Sometimes they want a 100-meter pool, but usually a 15-meter pool is sufficient, so we would have to look at where we would have that, and, you know, where would we have that room to do that at, and how we could do that, okay? So that is something we can look for to the future, that is not something that we're planning in 2021 or 2022 at this point in time, so just so the residents know, that is not on the radar as of right now. Okay? So, other than that, Mr. Staggs, last night, I was talking to him a little bit, and he was telling me how he wished we were getting a youth center with a basketball court, and how he had an idea about that. Mr. Staggs, do you remember what you told me last night about it?
I really don't.
It was, he brought up the idea of kind of piggybacking off of Mayor Baker, but not just the residents, but the high school.
Oh, yeah.
See, our high school usually hosts UIL tournaments, so by having this particular youth center with the basketball court, the high school could host a much larger tournament, because they would now have a viable third gym, I believe, that they could use to do so. So this, this whole combination of everything is something that's going to benefit the residents of Kennedy for a very long time. So, anyway, so that's kind of what the city council and the mayor, and the governing bodies put together for you guys, they just asked me to stand up here and be the guy to take all the darts and do this little broken presentation. So any other questions?
Well, I just think it's a great idea, because we're starting off with a great building out here, on Escudero out there, it's, you know, the facade and everything.
And it's not another empty building, it's like a building.
No.
You're getting used to a building.
Right.
And it has character.
It does.
It is, it is a historic piece of the City of Kennedy, so, you know, we're keeping something that is actually treasure in this town, in this community, and we're taking ownership of it, we're saying, okay, no more of this junk, we're going to make it what it needs to be and give it the homage it's supposed to have.
If you'd like, I can try to get with the historical commission and see if you can make that a...
Historic site.
Yes.
We talked about that when we visited the site.
Can we do that after we renovate it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You do that before.
There are lots of traditions renovated. You can't do anything after, if you did it before, you won't be able to touch it.
You already have them coming here for two, it'd be nice to add on another one possibly.
Definitely. So, laying on in the agenda, as most everybody knows, we're setting the agenda, we're going to talk about a workshop for this, and when we do, the council sets a date for that, we're going to have a workshop for the convention center at six years, that'll be the location for the workshop for that. So, anyway, any other questions? Mayor? Councilman? Councilman? Turn? Okay, very good. That's my presentation, thank you very much. Thank you.
Does that conclude the City Manager Report?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmation majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, consideration and approval of City Council workshop meeting minutes of June 22, 2021. Item B, consideration and approval on financials. Is there any discussion on Agenda Item Number Nine? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion, Councilmember Douglas, and a motion, Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 10, presentation, consideration, and possible action in regard to the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department forensic audit. Presenter on this is City Auditor Almond. Mr. Almond?
Please start the check. Yeah.
I am Donald Almond, CPA, and this is our summary of the Professional Forensic Accounting Services regarding the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department. First, we'll just go to the reports on the first page. We examined bank statements, receipts, check copies, and any and all other supporting documents with the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department for calendar years ending December 2018, 19, 20. We also conducted interviews with Mr. Brandon Breones, Ms. Mandy England, and Mr. Austin Bryan, and we have the attached financial statements, spreadsheets, work documents, showing the notes, results, and evidence we've obtained, they're all included here behind the report. They're all included here behind the report. With regard to any possible fraudulent activity or defalcations, we do not have enough evidence to support any such conclusions. As noted further back in the report, there are many transactions that do not have documentation or supporting evidence. For example, there's numerous expenses on the bank statements, you know, to HEB, there's no receipt or description, so, you know, we just don't know. We don't know, you know, what exactly was purchased there, so we really can't say, you know, either way, we can't say, hey, yeah, that's definitely a valid expense. We also can't say, no, it's not a valid expense. And kind of summing that up further, I said, can I say with 100% certainty that fraud occurred? No. We don't have any, you know, usually when we do a forensic exam, it's actually, we have a small city working on now, where we found a city secretary got $130,000 in extra compensation over four years. The way we're able to prove that with that is checks to her. Are there any checks in the year to volunteer fire department members? No. So we don't have any evidence of that. Do we have any, you know, evidence of cash withdrawals and personal expenses? No. But can I say with 100% certainty that absolutely no fraud occurred? No, I can't say that either. And for example, that, on July 17 of 2018, $387.75 was spent at Walmart. We don't have a receipt, we don't have a, you know, we don't have a description. So, you know, was it for fire department supplies, was it for groceries? We just don't know. Was it for diapers and baby books? We don't know, there's not, there's not a receipt to support, you know, any, any conclusion on it. Also, July 1, 2019, $79.11 was spent at HEB, and we verified that through the bank statement. No receipt, no description, so, you know, we just don't know. Could it have been for groceries for a feed night? Sure. Could it have been for beer? Maybe. Could it have been for bubble gum? Hey, we don't know, there's no receipt. Anyway, so I said, basically, that's just kind of our, you know, our summary with that, and what we would most recommend with that, which, you know, numbers of the volunteer fire department are decided is going on, you know, you gotta have receipts or invoices for each expense that goes through the bank statement, and you do need to document what it's for. You know, that way you can, you know, make sure that everything is accounted as it should be, and in speaking with them, we found that Judy is now handling that, and from working with Judy, I guarantee you it's going to be handled properly. If you have Judy, doesn't let anything get by her. And so, now I'll just kind of give a summary of what we did find, so basically, so the one things we can document are any deposits to bank statements and expenses out of bank statements. So for calendar year 2018, $103,989 was taken, this is in his deposits, which consisted of, there was an insurance claim settlement of $56,933 from the park fire, $30,141 was taken in donation income, grand income of $9,500, and then other income, without any description, of $7,405. Total expenses for 2018 were $76,663, with most of it consisting of a month ago, a $55,009 donation expenses of $7,826, safety equipment of $3,836, uniform expenses $15,47, supplies $1806, and then other expenses of $5708. It does appear, at least from the descriptions given, that $14,864 of the park fire insurance proceeds may not have been used for reimbursement of that, but again, since there's not descriptions on everything, we don't know. You know, so there could have been expenses that didn't have a description that were for, for that reimbursement. For 2019, $13,577 in income was received, $8,000 in grand income, $3,354 in donation income in 2023, and other income. Expenses were $16,236, with $8,000 spent on training facility expenses, $2,586 in donations, and then $5,615 other expenses. More descriptions and receipts were provided in 2019 than we saw in 2018, but there are still expenses that did not have, you know, any supporting documentation and no receipt or invoice. For 2020, this wasn't for a full year, we just had up to August 3, excuse me, $10,607 in cash deposit, $7,200 of that other income, $3,250 in donation income, $157 in spending. Expenses of $4,0952 were found in bank statements through August 3, vehicle repairs in 2016. Uniform expenses of $7,48, and additional expenses of custody. Let's say, and we do have financial statements behind these, that, so it's if y'all wanna look in more detail on actual income and expenses, that's in there. One of the things that we were, you know, asked to kind of look at, and say, we did, it was noted there was beer purchased for some of the feed nights, we did see that on some of the invoices that were required, I mean, that were provided, I'm sorry, and it was noted it's illegal to have alcohol on City of Kennedy property. I spoke with the Treasurer, VFD, he noted that that has stopped, it is no longer occurring. So, it did occur in the past, it's not not occurring anymore. It was also communicated to the volunteer fire department that every expense should have a supporting invoice or receipt, and a description, and the volunteer fire department representative did say they've already adopted that procedure, and as I said, with Judy doing the accounting now, I have no doubts that's gonna, that's gonna be the case. And as I said, it could come, you know, whether feed nights and community donations are acceptable expenses for a volunteer fire department, that's a legal issue. I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm not an attorney, so I, you know, if any further action needs to be pursued there, that would need to, that would need to come through an attorney. Mr. Briones stated, you know, he felt he was, you know, fired without cause, and say, again, I'm not a human resources person, also not an attorney, that would be a legal issue. So I can't render an opinion, you know, either way, on that. Because England had said there was a $1,000 discrepancy in fees paid for calls and trainings and attendance. Unfortunately, we don't have access, but that was paid through the City of Kennedy bank accounts, not through the volunteer fire department accounts, so we don't have, we didn't have access to that, so we couldn't verify, you know, either way, but, and if we, whether that's correct or not, and again, again, this is kind of, I hate to pun again, but yeah, that's kind of a legal issue. Ms. England also claimed insurance claims for the park fire were fraudulent, that the equipment claims lost would not be used in that sort of fire. I'm not a fire department, you know, I'm not a fire expert, I don't know. Again, that's a legal issue, so if further actions were on that, it would need to be pursued through legal action. It was claimed volunteer fire department jackets were approved at $26 a person, they actually cost $56, you know, again, hate to pun again to the attorneys, but yeah, you know, that would be just whether it was documented in their board of directors, minutes, that sort of thing. And there also was noted there's gaps between deposits and instances where fundraisers were conducted, speaking with fire department personnel, they said they would try to do a better job. With that, I guess one thing I would like to state, you know, remember the, it is a volunteer fire department, so, you know, these people have full-time jobs, they, you know, then they volunteer to provide fire services, and then they would do this, you know, buying stuff, bookkeeping, and all that. So, you know, I don't, you know, see, they're not getting paid for that, so, you know, so you had someone who's, you know, done volunteer stuff before through youth sports and all that, you know, I know sometimes it might be, might be hard to kind of, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's. But same conclusion, this report does document the procedures we used, the evidence we obtained, findings were reported, and suggestions for improvement, as our main two suggestions for improvement here, it's your number one, gotta have receipts for your expenses, because like I said, that, you know, that just, we don't know, so $387.75 was spent at Walmart, there is no receipt, so we just don't know, you know, we don't know what that was for. So you have to have a receipt, and then, you know, you have to document, so you don't say, five, you know, $387.75 was spent, if it's on steaks, and beer, and, you know, baked potatoes, and all this kind of stuff, okay, but now what was that used for? So maybe you would need to document, okay, that was used for our feed night, you know, at this, or that was used for this Mayo Fest, and there's, there is, you can go back through here, there is times where we did have that kind of documentation, which is good, but then there's just other times where there's not. Like I said, when there's not, it just raises a bit, hey, we don't know. So that's your number one recommendation there, you gotta have receipts and invoices, but then also a description, too, with those receipt and invoices. Number two, we recommend at cash collecting events, and we gave an example of this, a cash sheet that you use, let's say, you know, if you have a deposit, hey, we had a fundraiser, you had $419 deposit. Okay, I would like to see a cash sheet that shows, okay, you know, we didn't get any hundred-dollar bills, we didn't get any fifty-dollar bills, we got ten, twenty-dollar bills, we got, you know, five, ten-dollar bills, you got three fives, you got nineteen ones, whatever, you know, and you got so much in change. And then also ideally, you wanna have three people involved in that process, for proper segregation duties, you wanna have one person collecting money, a second person depositing money in the bank, and then a third person recording that deposit into the accounting system. That way, you know, to, to make a fraudulent activity, then you'd have to have three people in collusion, which is, you know, have it a lot harder than having one. Looks at every, I've done probably 13 to 15 fraud cases in my career, and every time there was, you know, one of them was $168,000, that was taken, the other was $130,000, and then the third biggest one was about $80,000. Every single instance of that is when one person, and one person had control over, you know, entering, entering any information into the accounting system, writing checks, pausing checks, so you don't say if one person's doing everything, but it's awful lot easier for them to hide that and not record it regularly and so forth. Mayor, that's all I've got. Any comments or questions?
Any questions from the council? I had one question, coming back to the earlier part of the report. The park fire, can you give us some detail on that? Was that a fire that happened here at the city park?
No.
Yeah.
Wasn't that the Walmart fire?
That was the old Walmart.
Oh, the old Walmart, okay.
Yeah, that was kind of the description that we gave.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, there is some more documentation, I think something about it was a chemical fire or something like that.
Any other questions from the council? If not, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Item number 11, consideration and possible action regarding the purchase of a 2020 F-550 Skeeter Hybrid ACP brush fire truck in the amount of $195,036, and authorizing the city manager to extend city funds and sign all necessary documents pertaining to the purchase. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Thank you. So, last year when we wrote the budget, we were looking at a FAST grant, and the FAST grant had a match, so we funded the fire department with $150,000 for the purchase of a brand new vehicle, and the host was gonna get the FAST grant, that was gonna cover the city's portion of the match and the FAST grant. We were unsuccessful in getting the FAST grant, and the money still was in the budget. The fire department has an ancient brush truck, I think it was around when dinosaurs roamed the earth and brontosaurus pulled it around time for them, I guess, and they're in desperate need of a new vehicle. So they came to me, we discussed it, I told them to run ahead, the money's already been approved, we'll go ahead and do this, and they went and got me a quote, the quote came in, $45,000 more than what we had budgeted, not to despair, the city's Texas champion fire department bank account has a $46,000 balance in it. So we have enough money to pay for the fire truck, okay? So what we're doing tonight is I'm bringing this to City Council, so you all can look through this, I say any questions that you have, maybe of me, or of Chief Bryan, who I believe is here tonight, regarding this truck, and just more or less just to go ahead and authorize me to spend the additional funds and do everything I need to do to get them a new fire truck, so.
That's gonna come out of their budget, the one they see?
That comes out of their budget, yes.
And then the 46...
Right, and there's already $46,000 in that bank account that's been sitting there all year long, so, you know, the day will be good.
What are we gonna do with the old truck?
Um, you know, I've talked to Chief Bryan, see if they wanna keep it, and if they don't, maybe we'll see if I repurpose it somewhere else in the city, or something. Maybe it'll become city manager trucks.
We probably wanna keep it. We'll add some more to the city, cover more area with people. That's, that's the idea.
The whole, the whole purpose behind this truck is, all we have is two vehicles, two vehicles. Don't make me do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you the floor. Anyway, I can see.
You hear it that way.
Okay, so, the whole reason behind this is, my name is Jessica Stee, I'm the drill captain for the fire department, so I was headed, kind of headed off to lead this thing. So the reasoning behind this is, I don't know if much of you know what we have in our station, we have two brush trucks and two structure trucks. One structure truck stays in the city, the other one could roam around the county wherever we needed. Both brush trucks, you know, go wherever. So whenever one vehicle's down, that leaves us one vehicle short, you know, so all we have is one vehicle to service the whole county, regardless if it's a brush truck or a structure truck. So we're needing something that kind of fits in the middle, where we could kind of go wherever we needed to. A big thing is, with all these wrecks that have been happening, we don't have a whole bunch of rescue equipment, because we have to take one of our structure trucks, and we got tools, and kind of outfit it for rescue stuff, and it's not really what it was intended for, so we don't have the space for a lot of tools that we need, and, you know, to do our task. So this truck is gonna be, like you said, it's a hybrid, so we'll be half rescue, half all, and we'll be able to outfit it with more rescue tools, and be able to cover and get our guys more training and more tools and stuff, and still be able to fight grass fires, stuff like that, so that's one of the...
So the old truck is operable, it still runs?
Yes, sir.
So y'all can still use it?
Yeah, we'll still be able to use our fleets we have, we just need, with the city growing, I mean, we're bringing stuff in, with our city growing, we gotta grow too, and that's, that's one of the things.
Another tool for your toolbox?
Yes, sir.
And it is important to note that when we get to the next, the next line item on the agenda, we did put in $80,000 to the fire department's budget to help outfit this particular vehicle.
Yeah, so the, so the 195 is just the truck itself, we still gonna need, you know, and like you said, we already talked about it, put in our next budget, we're still gonna need to outfit this truck, so that's where that money will come in. Anything else?
Any questions from the council?
I have a question about the truck, I have, what ever happened to the trailer that you guys ordered? Did you ever get that?
Not yet, I just talked to the guy the other day.
Not yet? It's been like...
I went and visited it about a month ago.
Was it like two years?
When I looked at it, it wasn't quite completed, I figured that, we've been here this long, it hasn't completed, so we weren't paid for it.
So you're just waiting for it, then, basically?
Yeah, there were still some other things that I wanted done to it.
And it's been like, two years?
Well, since, yeah, I probably, we're on track. But, there was a couple of things, like I said, that wasn't completed, that we had talked about it, and I saw it, so I wanted it completed, and he's done it, he said, if he can get somebody this weekend to deliver it, but it's not, he promised that, pretty much, but delivering it.
We'll send Chief up with his truck to go pick it up.
Mr. Lynn, what are we, I'm tired of seeing that red truck out there, what are we doing with that?
Chief?
We need to put that back in operation.
Uh, yeah, and that's what I'm doing right now, I've got another truck that's down, I'm gonna send it to the shop tomorrow, as soon as that one's done, I'll get this one.
Yeah, because it don't make no sense for it to be parked out there, just like it's been parked for three or four months, and we need to utilize it, we're paying insurance on it, and we need to take care of it, and put it back into the department.
What is happening on that one is all the wiring for the lights and stuff, it's drawing the batteries down, and then just, you know, if there's nothing on it, it goes down. But the one we put batteries, have the batteries, so like I said, after we...
Fix the problem and put it back in the fleet.
Put it in the service and try to get that fixed, and then probably have to rewire it, and then that's gonna have to come off, so.
It's better than it being parked out there, just being a paperweight out there. It's a good, it's a good truck, I think it's still a good truck.
It's still a great truck, it's got the best...
It's got a great engine, though.
Yeah, seven, 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 three engine, yeah, so.
Any other questions in regard to agenda item number 11? Thought I would entertain a motion at this point?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 11, as it's written on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Go motion from Councilmember Douglas, and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the rule.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes. Four voters in favor, motion carries. Item number twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve, an ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Kennedy, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, adopting the annual budget of the city of Kennedy, Texas for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal funding year budget, funding municipal purposes, authorizing expenditures, providing for a repealing clause, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Presentation on this from Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. Council, mayor. Okay, so this is our budget. This is the chance that we have to go ahead and adopt the budget that you all have seen, that we had the hearing on. The budget, as it has been presented to the city council and to the mayor, is a budget that has a thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollar surplus on it. All of that comes from the general fund. The airport fund has a seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollar surplus, so we have a total surplus of just over forty-eight thousand dollars between the two funds. So we not only brought a pretty much balanced budget this year, we did it without moving money from our reserves, and it's inclusive of all the payroll that is in there, all the expenditures that are in there and that. And one thing that's important to note at the workshop, I quoted a number, I got an email today, just so you all know where we are. As of today, the CPI, which includes inflation, year over year for August, is sitting right around five point three percent. The total raises, just so you all know, for the salaries is only five point five. So, so that's right in line with the CBF. So we didn't put anything in the budget that wasn't in line with what's going on in the economy today. So, any questions?
My only.
Ms. Gadd, I, I brought it up earlier, you weren't here. I want, I'm okay with the three percent cost of living to our employees, but I'm not okay with the, with the merit increase. And I wanted to know, is, can we amend the budget to remove that?
So this is, you know, the budget that we're, we're presenting for your approval. If you all had issued the budget, you would have to hold a separate, you know, public hearing in order to hear those amendments.
Before October first?
Before the deadline.
So we'd have to have another hearing?
And you would have, it would have to be before the deadline?
We'd have to call an emergency meeting?
No.
No.
It does not qualify for an emergency meeting.
We would have to have it posted in the paper legally within the.
That's right.
What is the deadline?
October the first.
October first?
That's when the, but the fiscal year starts.
It's going to be fifteen days posting before the hearing.
Today is Tuesday. You'd have to get it in the paper by Thursday, would run next week, which would be the twenty-third. Then you'd have to schedule the hearing and that, yeah. The timeline's not there. But Ms. Gadd, the greater question at hand isn't what Councilor Rodriguez said. I challenged Councilor Rodriguez in the hearing, stating that as the city manager, I'm under a contract with the city of Kennedy. Part of my contract gives human resources and all human resources to me as a function, which includes salary setting. I stated that that could be a breach of my contract if Councilor Rodriguez had then voted to not accept that after I did that under the pretense of my contract. The mayor is curious as to whether or not that would potentially constitute a breach of my contract.
I think there could be some back and forth on whether that would be a breach. You know, it's something that has been assigned to you as a duty and part of your job. I think that it's also totally allowable for council to ask. You know how you came up with that number? However, it has been assigned to you as something that is supposed to be part of your job, part of your expertise. It is just also part of the public hearing process for them to be able to ask why you came up with that merit amount and for you to be able to defend it to them.
And we're, we're allowed to do amendments as a council, amend a, a budget.
You are allowed to bring out issues with the way the budget is set up, that is correct.
Since I'm not asking to add on, I'm asking something to be taken off.
Most amendments as well, we know, if the money is there, it's usually, you know, after you set a budget and you have the public hearing and it's amended, it's usually because there's some way to decrease an expenditure for the city. So usually amendments don't just happen for things that are, you know, not otherwise advantageous for the city. They're a little bit rarer, but council does, you know, have to approve your budget overall. It's just so happens that within Mr. Lynn's contract, he has been given discretion over, you know, speculating as to the amount of the merit raise.
Hypothetically, if the council did not vote to approve the budget at this point, what would our options be?
The options would be, you know, the timeline is very tight, like they said. I know, Ms. Bevan, as you already worked out the math about whether or not we could post the notice before October first, at this point. We would have to work out, you know, we would have to remade to discuss the budget before the timeline, and if, you know, the timeline isn't there, the city is basically stuck with the budget that it has currently, and it would not be able to move forward in the budget. What's the timeline?
Timeline is, we would have to post it, and it'd have to run for two weeks, which puts us at September thirtieth.
That is correct.
And then you would have to have the budget hearing and adopt it before October first. So you couldn't hold a hearing until October first at the earliest.
So our hands are tied, basically?
I might add to say that when we held the workshop, that would have been the proper venue to raise this issue. That would have given us all the proper timing to deal with this. By not raising this issue at the workshop, it's handicapped everything.
I'd like to say it's a good budget. Generally, I'm pleased with the budget. I raised my only concern during the budget workshop, and that was that I felt like, in lieu of the three percent COLA increase for the city employees, I thought a more fair alternative would be to do a bonus in lieu of the COLA increase. There would be the equal amount. Each city employee would be awarded an annual bonus of an equal amount, because, as we all know, the basic cost of living increases the same for everyone, regardless of what you earn. If you earn eighty thousand dollars a year, you still pay the same price for hamburger meat at HEB, or a gallon of gas, or a gallon of milk. So I just thought that we'd be a more fair approach if what we're genuinely trying to do is offset the ever-increasing cost of living for the people in the community. But Mr. Lynn said during the workshop that that is not possible, and it's not legal.
Didn't we also determine that a bonus would.
Can't call it a bonus.
Much of it would be lost because it is a bonus due to taxes.
Yes.
Taxed it.
It has to be taxed.
It's taxed.
It sounded so much better, the three percent increase, because that is equal across the board, everyone got that. Depending upon your pay scale, depends on how much difference that makes in your paycheck, you know? And that in itself, again, is a lower level worker management and supervisor. Each of those draws a certain amount of money, basically on experience, you know, at their position. So I, I kind of think that if it was a bonus, everybody wants to get a bonus, but you have to understand that bonus is going to be taxed twenty-eight percent. So if you get a dollar, you know, you're, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Every dollar, you're going to be taxed twenty-eight percent on that money. They're actually getting more money by having a raise increase than getting just a once a year bonus.
Right.
What, three percent?
And as I stated in, in the meeting, going along with the mayor said, just for your clarification, I stated that it was not legal, because in order to give a bonus in a government entity, you first have to define the parameters that would trigger the bonus. You can't just give the bonus. And there is no parameters. The city is getting nothing for this bonus. The city has to get something for the bonus money to be distributed. And that's the difference between giving the bonus like what the mayor was suggesting, which wasn't entirely a bad suggestion, versus a longevity bonus. For longevity bonus, we get their service for the year in return for the money. And that's kind of the way I presented that to the mayor and the council.
And we cannot legally call it a bonus, because the governing body cannot give a bonus. We have to call it something else.
Actually, I found something on the TML website that said otherwise. There is, there is a process for awarding bonuses to city employees.
You do have to budget it out, though.
There is, there is a procedure that you must follow, and I read the details on that. But, but, Gadd, while you're here, in your experience, do you know of any other city governments that have been able to award a flat rate pay increase as opposed to a percentage-based pay, pay increase?
You know, I cannot think of ones off the top of my head with that difference. It's not really an issue that I might come up with a different budget for sure.
Okay, so our hands are somewhat tied in that regard as well. But maybe something to look at down the road.
Definitely.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. It was more of a statement, I guess. I, I don't know if this is the case from Councilor Rodriguez, but I know for myself, I've had several constituents reach out to me after we had the, the budget hearing. And some, you know, issues I was able to answer, and then others presented themselves with not enough time for me to get to you to ask. I, it, I'm kind of on the same side as far as not wanting to do the merit increase. However, you know, I, I, we have to, we have to approve the budget. The reasoning for myself and many of my constituents as far as the merit increase is, and I'm just going to kind of quote what they've been saying, we need to clean up the city. You know, a lot of constituents of mine that are very active, live right off Fifth Street, and are constantly, constantly concerned about safety and trash and traffic and, I mean, just a whole bunch of issues. So it's, without going on this huge tangent, I'm just going to say that it's my hope that with significant salary increases, that we will see significant improvements in the city. You know, that, that's my hope. You know, like Mr. Lynn mentioned earlier, we're legislative, so, you know, I'll, I'll continue to hear my constituents and meet with them and, you know, help address issues that they have. But I, I hope, I hope to see a significant improvement overall in, in all of Kennedy, not just, you know, the hotspots like downtown, Fifth Street, you know, the major railways, because there is a lot of debris, there's a lot of dirt, there's a lot of trash, there's a lot of, I mean, we could have, we could talk about this for hours, but I, I just hope that we, we see significant improvement. That's, you know, a lot of my constituents' concerns.
I'm going to piggyback off of what he said, because I, I've had constituents reach out to me and look at this and say, these are pretty, that's a big increase, and the conditions of the roads, brush all over the place, overgrown lots, and I'm going to just say that I hope that we can step it up a notch, you know?
Well, let, let me say this, okay? First off, the budget is mine, okay? And at the end of the day, if you're not happy with the way the budget's being run, you're holding me accountable for it, not the employees, okay? I'm the one that you hired to run this budget, and I'm the one that stands in front of you and gives you the financials, and I'm the one that you hold accountable if you don't like the numbers. But at the end of the day, it's my neck on the line for these numbers, regardless of what numbers they are. And I'm going to say this about the residents voicing their concerns in the city of Kennedy about the streets and the overgrown lots. I've been here a year and a half, and of that year and a half, most of that was COVID, where we were in lockdown, we couldn't do half the stuff we needed to do. In the span of the last six months versus the first twelve, we have made whirlwind moves to do things for the first time in a budget that I've seen in the city of Kennedy, and believe me, I looked at your budgets before I interviewed with you. We have in the budgets ten streets to be repaired, five complete repairs, and five chip seals for this budget year. That is a very aggressive schedule, just on streets in any municipality our size. So is it there? Yes. Will we see results? Yes. Are we going to see them today? Absolutely not, okay? These things take time. So will we see improvement? Yes. The city is heading in the right direction, and we're moving there. We're replacing cast iron pipe with PVC pipe, we're getting that taken care of, we're doing all these things. And all that stuff for new lines, that's all in this budget. Everything that the city council has asked me to do is in this budget right here. Everything you want is in this budget. The only thing I put in there, because it's just me, is you take care of your employees. It is up to me and my directors to make certain that those employees give us the call in work. Jim Rohn once said, you don't get paid by the hour. And I hope the employees are listening to me. I don't pay them by the hour. I pay them for the value that they bring to the hour. And if they don't bring any value, they won't be working for the city of Kennedy. It is that simple.
That is good to hear, because that's what needs to be going on, that, I know we got good employees.
We do.
We have some bad employees. So that's, that is your job to hold them accountable.
Yes, sir.
And take care of the problems.
That's what you pay me for.
And I can go back to the seventies with the city of Kennedy, when we had one dump truck and one backup, and we had to take care of the whole town. We have excellent equipment, and we provide excellent equipment. For, I've never seen the city of Kennedy have the equipment that it has now. And we have to get that, those results. We have to, because the taxpayers demand those results.
And we will get results.
May I add to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rodriguez, what you just said is so poignant, because that merit, extra money in the merit sense, is the incentive, I think. Knowing full well at the end of the year that an employee is going to have an evaluation, that employee is going to want to work harder and want to do a better job because they want that bonus. They want that incentive, don't you think? So if, and if you don't, correct me if I'm wrong, if you do not make the merit-based medium, which I don't know what it is, you don't get the bonus, correct?
That is correct.
Correct?
I can't go into too much detail.
Well, it goes on the evaluations of our directors, advising our city manager, because they're the ones that are out there in the field, they're the ones that see these guys, and they're reporting. Mr. Lynn's job is administrative. I know he tries to get out as much as he can, but there's a lot of things, I, I, everybody in this town knows me. I have mentioned that to you on numerous occasions. People come to my house, I sit on the porch with them, they voice their complaints, they, they feel they can trust me. And I, and I value that very much, that people have that confidence in me. So when I have those, those complaints coming to me, I come, I've come on numerous occasions and sat down with people. And that's why we have to, and I feel, like I said, I go back to the seventies with the city of Kennedy with the Cedar Program, when I was in high school, working in summertime on, when the city had trash trucks. And I know what the difference is now. I see it from back then to what we have now. God has blessed us tremendously.
He has.
God has blessed this town tremendously, and it's our job. And it's our job as city councilmen and city councilwomen to make sure that we make the most of what God has given us.
Amen.
We are in trouble in the world because we're not listening to God. And we need to ask for forgiveness. And we need to also be disciplined in how we conduct ourselves every day. I was very proud to work for the city of Kennedy for all the years that I've worked. And I'm still proud of Kennedy. That's why I'm up here. Very, very proud. I'm very passionate about the city of Kennedy. And I want all of our employees to be just as passionate or more passionate because it is a good place to work. And we give them a lot. Yes, we do. And they give us a lot. Because remember, I was out there at 2:00 in the morning. I was out there endless nights, you know? And you don't ask for thanks. You just do it because, you know, it's your job, you know? And you enjoy your job. I did. And I know what the guys go through. I know what the guys go through. And there's not anybody that works for the city of Kennedy that knows me that's going to say, "Mr. Rodriguez doesn't want us to have the best." Because I have walked in their shoes. So that's why it's so important that when we take care of our employees, that the employees, we want them here, we want them happy. But the ones that don't want to be here and that are just going through the motions, our supervisors need to weed those guys out.
It's about accountability. They have to be held accountable.
If we're accountable, you're accountable, everybody's accountable.
And I've been around long enough to...
That is the key, if I can interrupt. That is the key phrase right there. I worked with the public for over 40 years. And if your employee doesn't care to begin with, doesn't matter how much of a raise you give them, they think they deserve it. And that's not always true.
I was going to say, I've been around a long time. And I can remember when the resources that we enjoy today were not enjoyed by the city when this budget that we were looking at 20 years ago was significantly smaller. So we've got the resources now. Thanks to the Eagle Ford Shale and the development we've seen over the past 10 to 12 years, the resources are there. And that's one of the reasons I ran for mayor. I didn't see the resources being applied to the maximum value for the people of Kennedy. You know, the resources are there. And it comes down to management. We have to manage those resources and apply them effectively so we can do all the things that everybody in this town wants to see done.
And we're moving in that direction. You know, I don't know if you all remember, but when you all approved as a council, and it might be before some of your time, but I know Councilor Sines was on that council, when you all approved those reviews that you wanted me to rewrite because that was part of the interview process, I took the 10 and 1/2 percent and I scaled it. Nobody gets a raise if they don't score at least a three. At least a three. Because on a scale of one to five, a three is acceptable. Nobody gets anything. If you're unacceptable, you get nothing, okay? And even then, if you only get a three to a certain number, you only get a very fraction percent of what's available. You have to score way, way high to get the maximum amount. And we do that to encourage the team to put forth their best foot every day and to give us the performances that we want. And when they don't, they see. But they also see the scale. And they see, okay, well, I got this and I only got this, but I could have had this. See? And so we hope that through coaching them and working with them, they'll take that in turn.
Is there an issue there?
Yes. So, but anyway, I'm sorry, I digressed.
Well, going back to Agenda Item Number 12. Any other further questions or discussion on this item before we move on? If not, then I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 12 as it is written.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
District 1, Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
District 2, Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
District 3, Councilman Parker? I'm sorry.
Absent.
District 4, Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
District 5, Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Mayor Baker does not vote on this.
No, I don't believe I have a vote. So do I understand it. Four voted in favor. Motion carries. Before we move on to Number 13, if I have agreement from the council, can we take a five-minute break? We've been here for over two-plus hours. And so if you can recess for five minutes and then we'll come right back to Item Number 13. Okay, it's 8:15 and we are reconvening after a five, well, probably a little more than five-minute recess. And we are continuing on with the agenda with Item Number 13. Consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance Number 21-13. An ordinance of the city of Kennedy, Texas ratifying the property tax revenue decrease in the 2021-2022 budget as a result of the city receiving less revenues from property taxes in the 2021-2022 budget than in the previous fiscal year, providing for a repealing clause, a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
The Councilor, Mayor.
Okay, so when we get to the budgetary process every year, the data encompasses a couple of things. One encompasses the budget, which we've already taken care of. The other thing that it encompasses is an aspect of the budget are property taxes, okay? So what we have to do now is we have to ratify or we actually have to set the amount. So the non-new revenue amount that was presented to you all, that is what this is for. So we have to set it. And then the next line item, I'll get up and talk about that. So that's what we're doing this time. We're actually setting the amount of the non-new revenue property taxes to be in the next line item, okay?
Any questions or discussion on Item Number 13 from the council? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.
One second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
District 1, Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
District 2, Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
District 4, Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
District 5, Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Four voted in favor. Motion carries. Item Number 14. Consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance Number 21-14. An ordinance of the city of Kennedy levying property taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city of Kennedy, Texas for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, providing for a repealing clause, a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So before I do this complete presentation, if you would, behind your ordinance is this piece of paper that has some highlighting on it in yellow and paint. Does everyone have that handy? This is going to be important, okay? All right, so here's what we're doing now. So in the budgetary process, we establish a budget, which we've already done. That one's off the board. Check mark there. Then we take our property tax rate and we have to say, okay, what's our property tax rate going to be? So we ratify that and we set it. Check mark there. Now we actually have to levy the tax, which in other words is to implement the tax. So this line item, what you're actually doing as the governing body, is you're actually saying, okay, you've set the tax rate. Now we're going to actually levy the tax to where it can be collected. So, and the reason why this piece of paper is so important is for whomever makes your motions on this particular one, you have to state in your motion that it is the non-new revenue tax rate. And you can just go ahead and state that total amount of .301226 in your motion, okay? But that has to be in your motion so that everybody, so it's on record what we're doing and what we're levying, okay? Any questions?
Any questions from the council or discussion on Item Number 40? If not, I would entertain a motion on Item Number 14.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 21-14, an ordinance of the city of Kennedy levying property taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city of Kennedy, specifically the no-new tax rate of .301226.
I'll second that.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
District 1, Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
District 2, Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
District 4, Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
District 5, Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Four voted in favor. Motion carries. Item Number 15. Consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution Number 21-07, authorizing and approving the Kennedy 4B Corporation 2021-2022 fiscal budget in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Section 501.073A. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. We're on it now. At this point in time, the Kennedy 4B Corporation met last night and they established their budget, which was provided to you late today due to their lateness in getting everything together. As the city council, you have to approve all expenditures of the 4B. And you do so through approving a resolution that adopts, that approves their budget. One key thing of note that I would like to draw your attention to before you all do this, in case you have any questions. They're going, this 4B has agreed to move 1.5 million from their fund balance into their revenue account. And then the other projects is where that 1.5 million is going to be spent. I'm going to more or less control where it goes. It's going to go towards the convention center and the youth center. That's why we asked them to transfer that money. I haven't determined yet what percent of that money is going to go to either project. But the 4B was very willing to move that money and do that to be a participant of this. These two projects are within the scope and the purview of the 4B. So that's why that number is there. So is there any question about their budget I might can answer for you other than that?
You said that the budget came out this afternoon?
Did you get a copy of this on your desk there, Mayor?
Oh, it was laid out.
Right, right. Right. They just approved this last night, so it was late, so it wasn't in your package.
Okay. I guess my only question is, is there money in the budget for the expansion of the Escondido Creek Parkway?
For the expansion of the Escondido Creek Parkway?
Phase 2, yes.
Phase 2? No, sir, there is not. That was not something that was brought up in discussions last night. I do know that I have gotten Ms. Langford and Ms. Hanson together looking for grant money to help with that as well. But last night, the 4B, we've not discussed that.
Mayor, did you find the budget or do you need another copy?
Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, it's buried under here somewhere.
Any questions or further discussion on Item Number 15? If not, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to accept the Resolution Number 21-07, authorizing and approving the Kennedy 4B Corporation the 2021-2022 fiscal budget in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Section 501.073. The budget is in the amount of $2,388,400.
I'll second that.
A motion from Councilmember Rodriguez and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor for just a second real quick?
Absolutely.
I must issue an apology to the residents of the city of Kennedy, the city council, and the mayor. I just received a text message from my children saying I had a big eye problem a while ago. I did not mean to have a big eye problem. I meant to say "we" and "us" when doing the presentation. So I do totally apologize to that. My kids just pointed that to me in a very humorous fashion through sending me a picture of an ogre. I'm sorry.
Not a problem as far as I'm concerned. Okay, moving on. Item Number 16. Consideration and possible action in regard to awarding a contract to Dirt Boys Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $153,743 for the Graham Road Milling and Overlay Project and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project. Presentation on this is from Mr. Lynn and Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all are aware, we have been talking about doing Graham Road for quite some time since we've replaced the sewer and the water on there up to New Acers, okay? So we finally, we thought we were going to be able to get around having to do the whole bidding process, but some preliminary bids came in way too much, so we had, we tied our hands. We had to go through the whole process. We went through the bidding process. We advertised it in the paper. We only had one organization respond, and that was Dirt Boys. So their bid is before you because it's all that we have. We do have experience with Dirt Boys. I know that Mr. Hernandez and I have extensive talks with the owners of Dirt Boys and that. And while they are working on East Main, while people may think that East Main's a blotch in their eyes to how they do business, I can assure you that is not the current case. It's an anomaly, East Main is, because of the concrete setting up. This has nothing to do with how they conduct business. The amount will be a not-to-exceed, which is how I usually do things because as a city council and as a municipality, we work off of a budget. And we work off of spending money in strict accordance with the budget. So whatever you approve is all we can spend. So that's why it's on there for that amount. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it forward to Mr. Hernandez for any questions that you all may have that's more specifically related to the roads and all of that.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Hernandez, you have anything to add?
No. As far as the Graham Road project is concerned, the preliminary bids or the preliminary quote that I have received didn't factor in a couple of other things as far as the cement creek, the existing base that goes into the trench for the water line that was installed going along on the south side of Graham Road. So that three-foot wide trench that's roughly three foot deep, four foot in some section, they're going to have to come in and cement treat that just to restabilize what we have currently underneath as far as the base is concerned. Some of that, it's, you know, it's all going to be milled at pretty much two inches across with a 2% slope. For them to, their reasoning behind the numbers is that they're going to have to come in and add some base material in order to have a crown at 2%. So when they come in, they're going to do the milling and everything else. They're going to cement treat the existing base that's there in the ditch or trench area for the water line. And if they need to, they're going to bring in type 1 grade 8 base to go ahead and complete the process to go along with the cement treatment as well. But then it's just a matter of whatever they need to do on the flip side in order to go around the manholes and everything else is one of the other issues in order to get the 2% slope or the 2% crown.
So it's my understanding that we're only going to do the area? We're not going to do the whole road from curb to curb?
As far as cement treats?
As far as the bollmack and ripping?
No, they're just going to mill the two inches. And then the only thing that was going to get cement treated was going to be the base material in that trench from the water line. Whatever they bring in, if they have to bring in anything for the crown, that will get cement treated. But if not, all it was was a two-inch mill with a two-inch bill over the top.
And that's from curb to curb, north and south?
Yes, sir.
North and south, the entire road? North and south, the entire road?
Entire, to way back.
Up to New Acers?
Up to New Acers, yes, sir.
From Escondido?
Yes, sir.
Well, the main thing is, and we're going to put hot mix down?
Yes.
With what?
Type G hot mix.
Six to seven inches to compact to two to three?
You're looking at two inches overall.
The finished product?
Yes. Straight across, two inches.
And they're going to try, they're going to take care of the integrity of the curbing because that's very important, the curbing that we have.
They're just going to tie it to a match.
They're going to work in between. Are they going to rip it with a maintainer or are they going to rip it with a bollmack?
They're going to come in with probably a CMI.
How are they on staff? Since they'll be working over here on this other project, do they have enough staff to handle both projects at the same time?
The thing about the East Main project, he only has, I think, three of his Dirt Boys employees on that job. It's mainly a leak, one of the subcontractors is the one that's doing all the concrete work, so it shouldn't be a problem as far as them staffing or anything like that.
Okay, so if we, if we award this, you know, winter time's coming up once pretty quick, are we going to be able to make it before, you know, about the temperatures with asphalt?
Yeah, as long as you're at fifty-five degrees and rising, you can lay out hot mix.
I believe their bid indicated four weeks. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, but we will, but we will do the standard issue of ninety days and, you know, governor.
Graham, I mean, we've been promising the people on Graham Road for a while, and I mean, I get, that's not my district, but the people stop me all the time when I'm coming up the road. You know, when are y'all going to get started? When are y'all going to get started? I said, the guys are working on it, the guys are working on it. We're going to get it done.
If we approve this tonight, how soon could we expect the work to begin?
I will give them ten days to mobilize.
So theoretically, it could be done in six weeks, way before Christmas.
Weather permitting?
Weather permitting. If he holds true to what he put in there, yes, but I won't, I will not commit this project to the residents of Graham Road to anything less than ninety days.
And also, would somebody consider, at the end of the day, when they're done, checking the road, making sure it wasn't left in the condition it was last time? I want somebody from the city actually, even if it's at the end of the day, to make sure that it's not a mess, there's not dust and hole, potholes everywhere.
The, the, one of the things that goes into construction is, when you're going to mill it up, you're going to end up with base. You're not going to have a roadway bed that has asphalt on it.
It's not going to be dryable, right? That they're not, I mean?
They'll be open.
It will be open.
It's going to be open to traffic. You know, so if the residents are living.
It's under construction, they'll still have access.
They're going to have access.
We can't cut them, we can't cut them off.
You know, but it's going to be one of them things to where, you know, the dust is going to be an issue. I'm not going to sit here and say it's not.
Yeah.
Because it is, they do have a capable water wagon that they're going to come in, and it's something that is going to be agreed upon for them to bring the water wagon beginning of the day, throughout the middle of the day, and at the end of the day. But when it comes into eight, nine o'clock at night, if they're not working, you know, they're going to have to wait until the next morning for the water wagon to come back. Anytime you're in construction, there's going to be an inconvenience.
I know that.
I'm not going to sit here and sugarcoat anything or promise that it's not going to be.
Well, I understand.
I understand what Councilwoman Sines is trying to say, but it's our responsibility that we make sure that they tidy up at the end of the day.
Oh, yeah.
That they don't leave piles, you know, without signage, without, you know, if it can be removed, at the end of the day, we need to remove it so we can get the road open properly. You know, on the bumpy issue and stuff, you can't, you can't make an argument without breaking some eggs.
Yeah.
You know, and you got to do it, and people understand that. They just want the good finished product. That's what they want, you know, and we have to, you know.
Believe me, I want a good finished product.
Yes, sir. You know, and you, as the street superintendent, they have to do what you tell them.
Exactly.
I mean, you hold them to task.
What we're talking about here is oversight.
Yes.
That there's representatives of the City of Kennedy that's overseeing the project, making sure everything's done properly.
Yes, sir.
How many projects has Dirt Boys done for us?
This will be their second project.
Second one.
What I can tell you is this, I can't tell you a lot of specifics, but Mr. Hernandez has been in a meeting with me and Dirt Boys, and Dirt Boys fully understands my expectations. I'm not playing games with any of these contractors, and they know it.
I hope they do a good job. It would be nice for the City of Kennedy to have consistent contractors with whatever project it is, whether it's a road or, you know, anything, you know, contractors that come in, do a good job, you know, give us a reason to want to keep working with them. I mean, they're the only one that submitted a bid, so I think that, I mean, it's not my district, but again, I think.
Pretty much limits our choice.
It's pretty much.
You know, I think they, the citizens on Graham, as well as East Main, deserve, you know, a great road, so hopefully they pull through with their two to four weeks, weather permitting.
One, one little caveat I want to throw out there, so if anyone in East Main, if anyone on Graham Road is listening, they can hear my voice, okay? I am going to open up seven days a week for Dirt Boys. I'm not going to confine them to Monday through Friday. Reason being, if I can find them from Monday through Friday, and that's all they're told they can work, you're definitely going to have Saturday and Sunday and nothing but dirt roads, okay? And that's, you know, but I'm going to open up seven days a week. Now, it'll be up to them whether they want to take advantage of it, but it really is advantageous to them to do it because that'll maybe help them get done sooner. And as anyone who's ever bid projects before knows, the faster you can get done, the more money you make. And so I am going to open it up for seven days a week for them to work up until seven o'clock at night. And we are going to have traffic control. I've already talked to Chief Ash, and we will be having traffic control with our department. So all that's going on there, so just so that you all know all that going into this as well.
Any further questions on agenda item number sixteen? Any further discussions? If not, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I will make a motion to approve agenda item sixteen.
I will second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number seventeen, consideration of possible action in regard to awarding a contract to SLP Constructors Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars for water line improvements on Loma Alta and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project. Mr. Lynn, Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, City Council, much like the prior project, Mr. Higgins has a water line project in East, down on Loma Alta. We had hoped it could have went the other way, but we couldn't. So we did through the same process, the bidding process, we re-advertised and that. We had Intrepid Surveying Company do the engineering on this and everything, so they actually took care of setting everything up for bid force and everything, and setting everything up. Once again, it'll all be the same timelines as any other project in the city, ninety days, ten days to mobilize from the date that you guys approve it, and then they'll have ninety days to complete it from that date. So in this particular instance, there was only one respondent, and that was SLP Construction. And I'm going to bring Mr. Higgins up and give him the floor for all the technical questions. Mr. Higgins?
I'd like to start off by saying, a few years ago, the City of Kennedy had violations for the pressure planes, connection counts, and so forth. Well, ever since I've been here, we've been working on those, and one of these violations was the area of this Loma Alta. It's a hill over here, I'm sure Mr. Rodriguez.
Truck Route seventy-two.
Right. And the problem was, is the pressure problems. The state said that we have to maintain a minimum of thirty-five psi to all residents that is on our water utility system. And on that hill, because of the bad water lines in the area and some ways from it, they were not able to maintain that, so that created a third pressure plane for the City of Kennedy. I've been in negotiations with TCQ for a while, and they, we have eliminated that pressure plane contingent on us getting these water lines connected over there so we can take out what we have there to get and maintain that thirty-five-plus pounds per pressure per connection. So what we have there now is a little, I think, half-horse, three-quarter horse centrifugal pump. We have a hundred gallon, I believe, a hundred gallon pressure tank with a bladder. All of this is non-compliant. So we've been working on this for several months. I talked with Mr. Lynn, I invited her a while ago, and we contracted with Intrepid to engineer this project. They turned it over to TCQ. They approved the project contingent upon everything that was in there. And then we also submitted a text doc because we had to do two bores. They granted us those permits, so we have came to this point here to where Intrepid sent it out for bid, and they sent me a letter. If you like, I can read this letter, that Intrepid, he's dealt with SLP before, and this one's kind of a way, but SLP has done quite a bit of work for the City of Kennedy off and on, even for emergency stuff, also contractual stuff before, so y'all are fair with him. And again, we only received a one bid that was advertised, and everything was done the way it was supposed to be. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
And so are we going to tie into that six inches on the north side of seventy-two? Go under the road?
Yes, you know, there's a six inch there, just a little ways up from Maytag there. We're going to re-pore that, tie that back, and replace all that line going all the way crossover to.
Doc, from Doc Street, Doc and coming up Victoria?
Victoria or Shaw one.
Yeah, Shaw goes on the other direction toward me.
And we'll be born again on seven forty-three.
That comes down.
And cross and connecting all that, because I think now there's, I'm not even sure really what's over there on seven forty-three, but I guess they had a leak at one time, so they ran, probably, I think, a one-inch poly through that as a conduit to get over there to keep water because it wasn't feasible, and that's where all this other stuff come into play. So we're trying to get all that looped in and with big, with six-inch line to get the quantity and the pressure over there that's required, and that'll make TCQ happy, and I'll be a man of my word by getting that done.
So we'll tie in right there at, at Truck Route seventy-two, coming down three twenty-nine, County Road three twenty-nine, where Mr. Bobby Johnson's shop is, right there. There's a six inch right there.
I wish I'd have brought the map with me, but I.
And then the six inch that's up on Truck Route where Mr. Hernandez's father lives, that one goes east and west, and then it goes down through that field and hits Houston Street, ties to those three valves that are there at Houston Street. So we're proposing to loop all of that in together to increase the pressure.
I know it's going to be looped, I can't, I'd have to go back and pull the plants back out, looking at too much stuff lately, but those two bores, and then when they come across on Doc or Shaw, come up, and then they'll both connect.
Yeah, because the one on Doc goes under seventy-two and goes on to Victoria Street. So if you're going to come up, you're going to come up on this other, on the south side of seventy, Truck Route seventy-two, going up toward the hill, Roaming Hill.
That's the name of it. So I thought I wronged that.
No, it's south of East, but it's called Roaming Hill.
Yeah, there's two or three names, I had got them all down here. There's another named for Karnes, we got Karnes at seven.
Seven forty-three, Overby Road?
Yeah, that's it, Overby Road, so.
Do we know where they advertise? Like, where are we advertising? Because we're only getting like one bid per.
Well, what I've been told by an engineer, that's not the question you asked, but when these go out, these, they have a list of contractors that they automatically call to let them know there's projects to be interested in bidding. But what's going on right now, these contractors, they're, they've got tons of work, and most of them don't want to mess with anything under a couple hundred thousand bucks. That's what I'm hearing. You know, we've had another proposal and bid and stuff go out, too, and we only had two on it. So, I mean, which may be on the agenda next month, but, you know, people are just not bidding on the smaller line items. There's just not enough money for them to move, so if they're not a local company, it's really not worth them mobilizing the company for, you know.
They're looking for bigger jobs.
Well, it's a lot of money to me and you, but to them, you know, it doesn't really pay their bills, so they stick with the bigger stuff and they stay busy, I guess. But that's what I'm being told, but I assume this is, that that's what he done, and that's what the other engineer done, and I believe they also advertised in the Karnes.
County one.
County one. County-wise, sorry.
Yeah. The only thing that concerns me is the company, I mean, we've, they've done a lot of work for the City of Kennedy. I just didn't like the last project they did and the way they left it, but I don't know, maybe there's not that many people over there.
Well, you know, every contractor has their day, and this job was.
Well, again, always.
One of them that was just, nothing they done was right. You know, when they were doing Graham, I'm sure that's what you're talking about, when they done Graham, I mean, everything was just, it was just crazy. They were trying not to open-cut the road for all the services, so they were trying to, you know, blind bowl or air drill, you know, to keep open-cutting the road so much to keep traffic down. The ground was so hard that it didn't really work too well for their little boring tool that they were trying to use. It was, but for most parts, overall, they've done some decent jobs, but.
Well, again, the thing that's going to be important again with this project is oversight.
Oversight.
So.
If you go out there, Mr. Higgins, and keep an eye on them, I mean, I got SLP to do a lot of jobs for us, but I had to stay out there.
Yes, you did.
I stayed out there with them, I told them that's not acceptable, I want it this way, and they knew that I was going to be out there. So if you keep an eye on them, I think they'll do good work.
Yes.
We can just put them on the agenda.
You should.
That was a joke, Mr. Lynn.
Any other questions, Mr. Higgins, on item number seventeen? Or any further discussion on item number seventeen?
No, I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez. I think, you know, like Mr. Higgins, you, yourself, or someone, you know, can, I don't want to say babysit, but you know what I mean? Make sure that these guys, you know, do what they're supposed to so that it doesn't turn into a Graham Road situation.
Any further discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on number seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item seventeen.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number eighteen, consideration of possible action to approve a request to vacate and replat in the CSL Commercial Subdivision in Karnes County, Texas, Block One, Lot Eleven, on the plat of record in Cabinet B of page twenty-eight of the plat records of Karnes County, Texas, to be known as Lot Eleven A and Lot Eleven B in the CSL Commercial Subdivision in Karnes County, Texas, to be further known as One Forty-two Park Place and One Forty-four Park Place respectively. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Mayor, Council, Mr. Albiar was supposed to present this tonight on behalf of the City and P and Z, as he is absent tonight. I'm going to be doing this here to add value to this, but essentially, all we're doing tonight is P and Z has approved this, and they're bringing it to council for council's final approval. approval so that these replats can happen. So that's really what we're doing tonight.
Is this in the area of Walmart back there or is it over there by Beasley?
Park Place.
Park Place is by Beasley, right?
Park Place is by Beasley, yes.
It's one of the newer streets going in the Walmart area.
Yes.
Any questions or discussion on Agenda Item Number Eighteen? If not, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eighteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a motion, I'm sorry, a second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, consideration of possible action to approve a request to vacate and replat in the PHT subdivision in the city of Kennedy, Texas, Karnes County, Texas, and being a portion of land described in a survey plat, zero point three three acres of land within the corporate limits of Kennedy out of the Carlos Martinez fifteen league grant abstract number six, Karnes County, Texas, and being a part of a portion of land described in the conveyance to PHT Hospitality LLC and the deed record in document two zero two zero 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 nine five two of the official records of Karnes County, Texas, to be further known as Three Eighteen South Sunset Strip. Is there a presentation on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Council, again, the P and Z has already heard the request for this and they've looked over everything. Mr. Albiar seems to have everything in line here regarding the potential replat. And P and Z did approve this at their last meeting. So all we're doing again here tonight is bringing this to you guys for the final approval so that the replat can take place.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn or any discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Nineteen.
I will second.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas.
Second.
From Councilmember Science. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I real quick?
Sure.
I'd like to take a moment of time to thank Ms. Dubnik for coming out here and sitting through this entire lengthy process to get to this on behalf of the P and Z tonight.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dubnik.
So thank Ms. Dubnik for coming out.
Thank you. I'll just say, this was approved in our August meeting of planning and zoning. The, I guess the applicants were not aware of the fees that they needed to be paid. And so I believe I have developed a checklist to provide applicants so that they know everything that they need to do so that things can be moved forward.
Streamline the process.
And so I, I think that's, that's making progress.
Good.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Twenty, consideration of possible action regarding Resolution Twenty-One dash zero eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy approving the submission of a grant application for the Office of Governor's Body Cam Grant Number Four Three Six Three Six Zero One by the Kennedy Police Department, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Chief Ash is the presenter on this. Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's that time of year again, grants are coming out of the state. They start their fiscal year in September, so it's started up. This particular grant is a body cam grant that they're offering. What I want to do is replace, upgrade and replace our current system with the newer version of it. The state will pay for it. They want a, part of the grant process is a resolution from the City Council, forget the word, supporting the grant. And so that's what it is. I think, I don't remember the exact words in there, what the body cam cost. The state will pay for the whole thing as part of a big push that the state is doing to get all office to have body cams.
I think it's great.
Let me see. It sounds like it's worth, worth a try.
The state will pay for it.
So we don't have to spend. Any questions for the chief on Agenda Item Number Twenty? Any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Twenty.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, closed session. City Council will meet in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, under Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven Four Personnel Matters, to deliberate the appointment and employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Item A, City Manager. Do we need a motion to go into closed session?
Just, just adjourn us and take the time.
Call the time. Ladies and gentlemen, this time it is eight fifty-six PM and we are adjourning into closed session. You're more than welcome to stay until we reconvene or you're welcome to leave. Thank you for coming this evening. It's ten thirty-seven PM and we are reconvening into open session following Item Number Twenty-One, closed session. So it brings us to Item Number Twenty-Two, open session. The City Council will reconvene in open session at which time action on the matter discussed in closed session may be considered. Item A, City Manager, action to be taken regarding items discussed in executive session. Is there any discussion or can I entertain a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-One dash oh nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy, increasing the City Manager's salary by fifteen thousand dollars from funds approved in the budget.
Good administrative.
I'll second that.
From administrative, from the thirty thousand dollar administrative funds in the budget.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Are there any other motions to be considered in regards to Item Number Twenty-Two? If not, then we will move on to Item Number Twenty-Three. Consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing the City of Kennedy Convention and Youth Centers. Presenter, Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Mayor? Yes, ma'am.
I, it should have been fifteen five.
Yeah, fifteen five.
Is it too late?
Can we-
Let's amend the motion. Let's go ahead and restate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just struck me.
Yeah. No, that's right.
I was doing the math.
Fifteen five.
Are you many?
So I'll have to restate it correctly.
I'll restate it. As a correction.
Just restate the motion.
As a correction to the last.
So as a correction to the last motion, I move to approve Resolution Twenty-One dash oh nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy, increasing the City Manager's salary by fifteen thousand five hundred from the thirty thousand surplus-
For administration.
Funds for administration in the improved budget.
And I'll second that.
There you go.
I have a motion, Councilmember Douglas, a second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Okay, so that brings us to Item Number Twenty-Three, which I'm, sorry, it's been stated. So, Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Your's.
All right. Okay, so now that we have exposed everything about the convention center, it's time for us to go ahead and schedule a new workshop to invite everybody out to look at it so we can bring in the architect and so we can start discussing the renovations of the building. So, and also discuss the, flushes. Discuss the plans for the youth center as well. So I will say I'm out the twenty-third and twenty-fourth daughter birthday.
I won't be here either.
What's that?
I won't be here those days either.
I won't be here either. I know, it'll be a Rima conference. Several days.
November twenty-first.
Up this month?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Is that a Tuesday? That's Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am. A week from today.
There's a Parkson rep. It's gonna be like this.
But that doesn't-
We can move them into-
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have to establish the place to be at the location. So we're gonna have a workshop at the building.
Perfect.
So, yes.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first works for everybody?
Yeah.
I don't know about Chris, but hopefully it'll work for Chris.
Yes.
What time?
Six PM?
Six PM is usually when we do them.
September twenty-first at six PM?
One small caveat, I won't have the kitchen cleaned by then. They're still working on repairs, so.
Okay, can I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to set the date for the workshop for Agenda Item Twenty-Three at six PM on September twenty-first.
Is there a second?
Do we have to add at six here?
Yes, we do need to-
Add location.
At the-
Kennedy Convention Center.
At the, at, right.
Eight, eight twenty.
Estadio. Yes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Douglas, second by Councilmember Science. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Item Number Twenty-Four, consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing interlocal agreement between the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority. Mr. Lynn, anything to say about this?
Just, this was a carryover for the second time. A council can, I mean, we're getting booked up pretty quick here in September, so.
I would say probably October.
October.
That way they have plenty of time too.
Yeah. So if we were looking in October-
What about October fifth?
Ouch.
First Tuesday.
That's National Night Out.
Oh, that's right. What I was, yeah, that is October fifth. Okay, um, council meetings on-
October twelfth.
So the nineteenth? What about the sixth?
The nineteenth?
Or the seventh? Doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
No, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
Any date works for me, so I'm open to suggestions.
No, P and Z's meeting that night. That's the first month, that's the first Thursday of the month, the seventh. Not that we still couldn't have the workshop that night, I'm just saying P and Z meets that night.
What about Thursday the seventh?
Are we looking in October?
Yes.
P and Z meeting?
Oh, that's P and Z.
What about the nineteenth? Did we say that?
October nineteenth.
Tuesday the nineteenth? Does that work for everybody?
Is that the third Tuesday?
That's the third Tuesday, so that'll be a Parkson rep.
Water, water meeting.
How about the twentieth?
It's open, that I'm aware of.
That's church.
How about the eighteenth?
That's open, that I'm aware of.
The eighteenth is open.
Monday the eighteenth?
Monday the eighteenth.
I know.
Monday, works for me.
Monday the eighteenth.
Okay.
And this is October eighteenth?
Monday, October eighteenth at six PM at the location here?
Yeah.
Okay, would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the workshop date for Agenda Item Twenty-Four, sorry, Agenda Item Twenty-Four, for Monday, October eighteenth at six PM here at City Hall in the auditorium.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas, a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
I just want to clarify, you said six PM?
Six PM, correct.
Okay. Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, motion carries. Moving on to Item Number Twenty-Five, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Does anyone have an item for a future agenda? If not, I have one. I've given written copies to the City Manager and the City Secretary, so I'll just read it aloud. Agenda item request, I'm requesting the following agenda item to appear on the agenda for the next regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council, which is set for October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Consideration of possible action in regard to identifying possible solutions aimed at reducing the number of vandalism incidents involving graffiti within the city of Kennedy and possible ways to remove the graffiti from city landmarks as well as public and private properties. So if we could get that placed on the next agenda, that'd be great.
Sure.
More or less a discussion item. I don't know if there'll be any action, but just in case. But this was a, some citizens have brought this to my attention and have driven around town and it seems to be a growing problem. And I have a collection of photographs that I want to present to everybody with information on the locations and just gotta have an open discussion, see if we can come up with some ideas to get that turned the other direction.
Definitely.
Cause it makes the town look bad. Any, any items from anybody else for future agendas? If not, then we'll move on to Number Twenty-Six, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Any announcements from anyone?
National Night Out, October fifth.
National Night Out, October fifth, six to eight PM at Joe Gully Park. Inflatables, popcorn, so it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Could I ask one question about that National Night Out? Is it, Chief, are you with the, heading up National Night Out?
I'm sorry?
Are you heading out the National Night Out?
It's a police department event, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I was just gonna offer services if you need like a face painter or something like that.
Oh, yeah, get with me.
You know.
Okay.
Get with you on that?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of different probation and the city court and county attorney, they're all gonna come and hand out information as well and, you know, it's kind of more of an informational and a kind of get together more than anything else, but yeah.
Okay, but you're having things for kids?
Yes, yes. Inflatable, we have some inflatables and we're at the playground too, which is gonna be, if you have a playground.
Okay, great.
Any other announcements? If not, I have two. We had a great coffee in the park with the mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Science and Councilmember Parker who joined us for it and we had a better, better than expected turnout. The weather, weather was beautiful. And, and yes, we, a new local business reached out to me and the name of the local business is Porter's Coffee and it's a little coffee trailer. If you've heard of a food truck, it's like a coffee truck. And they joined us for coffee in the park with the mayor and the coffee is amazing. I won't say it's Starbucks quality, it's better than Starbucks quality. And so we're excited to have them as a new business in the community and they are going to join me the second Saturday of each month at Coffee in the Park from now on.
Where's he parking his trailer at?
Right there next to the pavilion.
I mean, is that it, just on Saturdays?
They're everywhere. I think right now they're-
They're like a food truck.
This week, they're at the Hornsode Cafe, I believe. Yeah. They're parked across the street.
Right now, the trailers.
Yeah. Well, I know where I'm going to get coffee tomorrow. Well, I know where I'm gonna get coffee tomorrow.
They're, they're flexible, they roll, you know, they can take their business wherever they...
Hey, if he wants to come pull over here to City Hall parking lot, I'm sure I could keep him busy all day long.
But these are, these are new people who've located in the community, they've got a new business, and we met some other new people at Coffee in the Park who relocated here recently from Beeville, and so I'm excited to see new people coming to Kennedy and people who are excited about Kennedy and excited about the park, and I think things are looking up for Kennedy, so...
Good, I agree.
And my, my last announcement is Lonesome Dove Fest Parade is this Saturday, I don't know if everyone got my email, but I have entered the parade to represent as mayor and council my pickup truck, and all are welcome to join me, all the council members are welcome to join me. James said he might be able to ride in the parade, if anybody else wants to be there...
As long as, as, as long as I don't end up having to work it, I'll be there.
It's Saturday morning, ten AM, I believe the parade lines up near the library in Karn City, and the parade will pass through Karn City. We're going to be represented by the police department, and the fire department's gonna have several vehicles in the parade, so if the council members would like to ride along with me, I would love to have your company.
I would love that, we have a birthday party for our grandkids.
Oh, well, that's priorities, I understand. The parade starts at ten, um...
Six, six-fifteen.
Let me get you the information on the lineup time. I, I think, I, I have to be there, but you can probably show up anytime, as long as the truck is parked in line where it's supposed to go, then, then you can just jump in.
We already posted a potential forum for that meeting and lineup for around eight AM for check-in.
Oh, great.
So we can make sure the potential forum, we know he's picked up the right time.
Appreciate you doing that.
It's eight AM.
Good, so we're covered. Good. But you don't have to be there today, only I, I have to be there today, but you can come in at any time before the parade starts rolling, which is at ten, so...
Homecoming for Kennedy ISD is October first, where you're facing Rivera.
Do we have any Kennedy alumni with us?
How many?
Two?
Nine, no.
Two? I guess Parker, right.
I went to school in Patrick, Patrick.
Two out of five's, two out of five's not bad. Okay, well, any other announcements, or if that's the case, then I will say that it is ten fifty-three PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.